Good evening. Welcome to the City of Commerce City City Council Meeting. We were in an executive session. I'm calling the meeting back to order. And again, thank you all for being here. I'm going to start. Will the audience please stand for the presentation of the colors by the Commerce City Police Department Color Guard in recognition of Police Week?
Teldar, go! Present, colors! Teldar, go! Day, cut! Color bears, post! Prepare to post colors. For day! Post! Red cover! Present! Hoo! Teldar, hoo! For day, cut! Color bears, out, out! Face! Over, arch! Color bears, halt! For day, face! Over, arch! Day, go! Teldar, hoo! Day, cut!
Now if everybody will please remain standing, I'd like to call up Chaplain Anthony Pirano to give us, instead of a moment of silence this evening, an invocation.
Please bow your heads with me. Let's start with a moment of silence. Wise and loving God, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, and for friendship. God, you desire citizens to obey the governing authorities over them since you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, we pray for Mayor Ford, we pray for City Manager McBroom, for Chief Smith, for the City Council members, and for all the various levels of city officials and citizens in this assembled council. Lastly, we would like to pray for the agenda set before them today, including the events of Police Week and Police Officers Memorial Day later this month. We collectively want to pray for all police officers, especially those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. We pray that we honor their memory now during Police Week and forever. Thank you gracious God for hearing our prayer. Amen.
Okay, everybody can take their seats. I want to start off by thanking the color guard and the chaplain for their services this evening. It was a nice change of pace to see the colors posted in this council chambers and to enjoy in an invocation. First item is on the agenda here. We are going to have the audience introduction.
Pam Sprettler.
Betty Thomas.
Danny Thomas.
Ellen Howe, Board of Adjustments.
Carelli Caroll.
Danielle McCracken.
Yara Musarna.
Joy Bishop.
Jean Lethal, Board of Adjustment.
Angel Anderson.
Joeln Reyes.
Andy Anderson.
Brian Sherman.
Marco Padilla.
Chris Famer.
Claire Ellis.
Matt Weider Spahn.
Walt Williams.
Luis Oliveras.
Manuel Rivera.
William Reed.
Betty Kent, Assistant Scout Master.
Alan Alvarez, Senior Personnel Leader.
Brandon Slack.
Rosa Piña.
Roberto Alvarez, Scout Master.
Carolyn Keith, Parks and Recreation.
Julie, Commerce City Police Department.
Larry Wilt, Police Commander.
Dennis Moon, Lieutenant.
Mark Morgan, Sergeant.
Officer Tom Poe.
Dave Minos, Police Commander.
Dan Swift, Detective.
Desiree Lanyan, Property and Evidence.
Chuck Baker, Police Commander.
Danielle Schiefer, Sergeant.
Darren Sterling.
Troy Smith, Police Department.
Anthony Prano, Chaplain.
John Howard, Information Technology.
Great. Thank you all for being here. I can't not say something about the great job that the officer did on the bugle or the trumpet this evening with the National Anthem. We're blessed to have so many talented people here at the city to handle all sorts of occasions. So thank you to all the officers and the efforts put behind this evening's procedures. I'm going to start the meeting off with the National Kids to Park Proclamation. First need a council to make a motion to approve the proclamation. Council McCarthy.
I just wanted to take a minute to thank everyone who keeps us in this city safe, all of you setting out there and those that are at home and the ones that are at work. Thank you very much because if we can't provide safety, that's the number one thing I think we need to do and you do a very good job of it. So thank you very much.
Mr. Macaldoney.
I will echo Ms. Carson's comments and I will move to approve the proclamation 1301 National Kids to Parks Day.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Teeter.
Second it.
Our motion is second to approve a proclamation and allow the city manager, or I'm sorry, the city attorney to read the proclamation. You would love to pass that off, wouldn't you, Bob?
Oh, that's right.
Ah, it's just a trick. You're going to read it. You read the proclamation and then we'll vote on it.
Proclamation reads as follows. Office of the Mayor, Commerce City, Colorado, proclamation. Whereas, May 18, 2013, is the third National Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust, which empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit America's parks. And whereas Commerce City is committed to expanding recreation amenities for our youth and families, completing new playgrounds, trails, and open space. And whereas, it is important to introduce a new generation to our national, state, and local parks, and we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat the issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, and hypertension. And whereas, National Kids to Parks Day is open to all children and adults across the country to encourage a large and diverse group of participants. And whereas, Commerce City provides a wide range of parks and recreation programs and activities that improve health and wellness, resulting in more than 480,000 annual visits. And whereas, National Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. Now therefore, I, on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim, May 18, as National Kids to Parks Day, and encourage residents to take the children in their lives to a neighborhood, state, or national park.
Thank you. Now that the proclamation has been read, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Proclamation is approved. And I would invite Carolyn Keith, the Director of Parks and Recreation, come forward and meet the council down at the podium.
Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, if I may just briefly acknowledge that the May 18th is the official National Kids to Park Day. The State of Colorado, in conjunction with the Colorado Parks and Recreation, will be hosting an event on June 8th at City Park in Denver. And we'll be getting more information as those details come together. But Commerce City is one of 260-plus cities across the country that recognize the National Kids to Park Day. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have another proclamation, the National Police Week proclamation. What are the council's desires concerning the National Police Week proclamation? Mr. Macaldoney?
I would move to approve proclamation 1307, recognizing May 12 through 18, 2013, as National Police Week, and May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Great. Mr. Teeter?
Second it.
A motion and a second. I allow the city attorney to read the proclamation.
Office of the Mayor, Commerce City, Colorado, proclamation. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. And whereas, the members of the Commerce City Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our city. And whereas, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the men and women of the Commerce City Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, on behalf of City Council, call upon all citizens and organizations to observe the week of May 12 through 18, 2013, as National Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in so doing, have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Be it further resolved that Commerce City observes May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community.
Thank you. Proclamation's been read. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried and the proclamation is approved. And now we'd like to invite up Chief Smith and Chaplain Pirano to the podium so that we can honor them with the proclamation. And then I would like all of the, not just officers, but any police department employees that are here with us this evening to come on up so they can be recognized as well and we can get a picture. Counsel, join me out front, please. As you weigh on up the rail, we're getting close enough together to get a picture, I'm sure.
They're going to have to get organized for this picture.
Alright guys, bunch in. Alright, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I really appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and thank you all for recognizing National Police Week. We are very proud to work in this community and very proud of our chosen profession. I'd like to give special thanks tonight to Officer Tom Poe. Tom has coordinated many of the department's efforts for both tonight and the activities that were here.
I want to thank you, chief, and all the officers that are here and are not here for everything that you do. People may not know this, and a lot of people do, but your job is dangerous twenty-four seven. And I just, I know I couldn't do it. I was an MP in the service. When I came out, they asked me if I wanted to join the police force, and I told them no. And I had enough of it, so I honor you for what you do for our citizens and everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Macaldoney?
Just want to again say thank you. You provide incredible service to our community. You bring us great pride. The color guard tonight was exceptional. I, my father's on the color guard with the fire department, so I've learned and watched growing up, and it's a great honor for you guys to represent the department, and you guys have done a wonderful job. Great, great presentation tonight. And again, just thank you to everyone, day in, day out, for what you do. Thank you.
Mr. Amador?
Chief, thank you. Staff, thank you. Your whole department, on a continual basis, day by day, as first responders. I don't think many of the community people, or maybe there are certain people, that have a great understanding of what your job entails. The color guard was phenomenal tonight, refreshing as well. Thank you.
Mr. Benson?
Yes, I want to thank you all for everything that you do for our city, also. You put your lives on the line every day. It's just you never really know, when you get up in the morning, are you really gonna have to risk your life that day? But it could happen at any time. And it does, I guess, too often. But thank you for what you do.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you, chief, and all the officers who are here and ones who are at home. I see you guys on a daily basis, and I like that presence here in our city. You guys are very well, very well respected. All I can hear from a lot of residents, from every head of residents, is it's all good. I haven't heard anything bad about our police department. I appreciate you guys sticking together. Been through a lot, and so I just want to thank you guys, because every day, you know, you guys walk out that door, you may not come home. So I appreciate that. Thanks.
Councilwoman Carson?
I just want to again say thank you. The service that you do is imperable, that I can't compare it to anything else. And it really is, you have no clue what your day is gonna be, and you get up every day, and you go out there, and you keep us all safe. And since I've been on council, some of the experiences that I know all of you have gone through over just the short three years that I've been here, I commend you for that. I also want to commend you that recently, through a, an issue that arose, and the public was out to not talk very nice about our police officers, I watched each and every one of you get up every day, put that uniform on, and be professional, and respond to the calls as though there was nothing going on. And I want to thank you for your professionalism through all of that, so thank you.
Councilwoman Elliott?
Good evening, and I want to thank you as well, chime in with my colleagues here. Thank you so much, chief, and the department and staff, for providing the strong commitment that you have and dedication, providing the public safety for our residents. I can honestly say that I hear the highest of accolades for our department, and I think it continues to grow, and I'm very proud of our police department. So again, my sincerest thanks.
I guess it's my turn, chief. First of all, I'd like to thank you, and I appreciate the leadership that you've already given to the city, being here such a short time. I see some, some positive professional ideals coming out of your department and your, your specific office, so I thank you for that. And to the men and women of our police department, both staff and officers, I can't thank you enough. I know most of you over the years, long, long time that I've been with the city, and I appreciate everything you've done over those years and that you continue to do. I also want to tell you that I know that you went through some very trying times over the last few years, this last year especially. You've had to deal with different leaderships. Hopefully, everybody's rallying behind Chief Smith and giving him the opportunity to lead the department. I'm seeing some, some different type of positive attitudes. I know it's tough when things aren't going quite well for you to have to go out and perform your duties, but I can tell you, our residents expect it and appreciate it. And I know it's been rather trying. This last year, we average one homicide a year, and we're six last year, three of those homicides being children. And I know your job's not an easy job to do, and it makes it very hard for all of us to watch, as, as, as close to somebody as a dog may be, or a pet pig, or some of the things you see this council dealing with. Those homicides are human beings, and very hard for us to deal with as a community. And I can't imagine having to be the person to respond and have to deal with some of those things that you have to deal with. And you're truly appreciated in this community, each and every one of you, so I want to thank you, and I'd like everybody to give the police department a round of applause.
Thank you very much, Mayor. No question about it, we have a great color guard, Sergeant Schefflin and the rest of the color dart did an outstanding job tonight. Very proud of all the men and women in our department, and I appreciate the recognition from each of you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Keep the good work up. Next item on the agenda is another proclamation, and I think it's very fitting that we ended up having an invocation this evening, because the proclamation is for the National Day of Prayer, which occurred last Thursday. I'd like to ask the council how they would like to proceed. Councilwoman Elliott?
Move to approve the proclamation as stands.
Okay. Mr. Bullock?
Seconded.
Okay, I have a motion and seconded. Will the attorney please read the proclamation?
Office of the Mayor, Commerce City, Colorado, proclamation. Whereas, a National Day of Prayer was first proclaimed by the Continental Congress in seventeen seventy-five, and the current United States Congress, by public law one hundred dash three hundred seven, has called on our citizens to recognize an annual National Day of Prayer. And whereas, in an address to the Constitutional Convention in seventeen eighty-seven, Benjamin Franklin proposed that prayers be held in this assembly every morning before proceeding with business. And whereas, the clergy, religious groups, and congregations in Commerce City play a vital role in instilling values and promoting the common goals of the community. And whereas, we're all concerned about the people of our community and wish to focus on providing a safe community that will promote the interests of the people in the best possible way. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of Commerce City does hereby proclaim Thursday, May two, two thousand thirteen, as a citywide Day of Prayer, and further encourages every citizen of the community to pray each in his own or her own manner, seeking strength to face the challenges of today, requesting guidance for the uncertainties of tomorrow, and giving thanks for the rich blessings that we enjoy.
Thank you. I have a motion and seconded. The proclamation's been read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, and the proclamation is approved. I would like to ask Chaplain Pirano to come back forward to the podium, and we'll come down as the council and present you with the proclamation.
One, two, four. One, two, three.
Per Rene. She wasn't supposed to. We'll give everybody a chance that needs to, to leave to leave, and then we'll continue on. Well, the next item on our agenda is council communication, or citizen communication, and I noticed that we don't have the, written down here, the Cub Scouts or Boy Scouts, Boy Scouts, to come forward, but I would like the Boy Scouts, I'm assuming Boy Scouts, correct? We'd love to have the Boy Scouts all come up here for a moment to the podium. I want to thank you all for, for coming in tonight. Come on up. You couldn't have picked a better evening to come to a city council meeting when we get to see the color guard. Just line up right there where you're at, young man. Let everybody in that audience see you, all dressed up in your uniforms and looking the way you're supposed to. Is a scoutmaster here? Can you come on up with your group? I think it's a great tribute, whenever we can get young folks into our council meeting to observe what these young men were able to observe, and I'm sure they're here to earn some badges, and I want to make sure that they get the opportunity to address this council. So let's thank the Boy Scout group for being here this evening. And I would like all of you to line up to that podium, and just tell us a little bit about yourself. Do you keep it short, but I want to hear from each and every one of you. I think it's important, you're gonna make your way all the way down here to city council, we can at least hear from you. Tell us your name and what rank you are, or where you're at within the program, and I think that I won't embarrass you any more than that.
Alright, my name's Alan. I'm the senior patrol here for two eleven. We've been in service for like, two and a half years already, and most of our boys that are here are gonna get their citizenship and their community badge. And yeah.
Great, thank you. Alright, next?
My name's Brandon Slack, and came here to, um, just experience, have the experience of coming here and hopefully getting a badge.
Great, thank you for being here. Can you pull that microphone down a little bit if you need to?
Hello, my name's Manolo Vera. I'm rank tenderfoot. It's my first time coming here to the council meeting, and I hope I can keep on coming here.
Thank you. Don't be shy, jump right in there.
My name is William Reed, and I've been, I'm a tenderfoot.
First class.
First class. I'm happy to be, I'm happy to be in Boy Scouts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name, my name is Luis Olivas, and I like being in Boy Scouts, it's very fun, and I hope I get my citizen badge, and it's quite a pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jose, and I came here to earn my merit badge, and I'm a first class.
Great, thank you for being here. And I didn't want to tell all the boys before, but now they can go home and watch theirself on TV. So thank you to the, to the Boy Scouts for being here, and anything that I can do to help you with any other badges that you may need, that, that I can be of assistance, I'm putting that offer on the table for you and your group. Okay? Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Now we'll get into citizen communication. Let me see if I can screw this name up. Caveley Corral. Corral. Did I mess that up? And is this Danielle with you?
Yes.
Okay, you're the two that I have on here. You gonna go ahead and speak together?
So my name is Corelli Corral, and I'm part of FCC LA.
Okay, I need your address too, as well.
Sixty-nine oh one Women Court, Commerce City.
Sorry, I'm, I'm the teacher, and I'm the one that didn't put my address down. My name is Danielle McCracken, my address is four five two eight Quandary Creek Street in Brighton, Colorado.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, both ladies and gentlemen. We are so happy to be here. My name is Danielle McCracken, and I'm a teacher at Adams, in Adams fourteen. I teach both at Adams City and Lester Arnold. I'm split between the two buildings, and I teach teen parenting and child development in both buildings. I am the advisor for what is now called Family Career and Community Leaders of America. That's the new name, you guys might not, you guys might know it as FHA. It's a sister organization of DECA, FBLA, VICA, Skills USA, there's, I don't know, about a dozen of us. FCC LA is the largest student-led organization in the nation, and Adams fourteen was proud enough to take fourteen competitive leaders to the state conference this past April. The two students that stood out the most, one from Lester Arnold and one from Adams City, this is Corelli, she's my Lester Arnold leader, and she competed in job interviews, she took a silver medal at the state level. The other young woman, who is also an amazing leader, couldn't be here with us tonight. Her name is Alicia Salz. She ran for being a state officer against several other candidates. She stood up in front of twelve hundred peers, and did a one-minute speech, and then stood in front of ten other interview panelists, which are also high school students, mixed with advisors, and did a three-minute speech, and then a fifteen-minute interview, and then did a forty-five-minute problem solving. So from, as you can hear, it's not an easy process, but she is the new vice president of recognition of the State of Colorado for FCC LA. We are so pleased to have such amazing leaders coming out of our FCC LA chapter of both schools. What we're doing now is raising money to take both Corelli and Alicia to the National Leadership Conference in July. The National Leadership Conference is about fifteen hundred dollars to take per student, and obviously they have to have an adult go with them, so I have the amazing pleasure of leading both these girls to the National Leadership Conference. The National Leadership Conference offers them tremendous opportunities to grow their leadership development. I'm playing with my pen, it's my nervous habit, I guess. They get to offer, or they offers them leadership development, networking opportunities. It forces them to talk with students from around the country, including Guam, Puerto Rico, Virgin Islands, Hawaii's there. It's an amazing experience, not just for networking, but for leadership opportunity. They'll go to workshops, get to hear from other student presenters, they'll get project ideas, learn how they can really embed themselves in the community. I was an FCC LA guru when I was in high school. I too was a state officer. I got to go to the national conference three times, following my sister's footsteps, who went twice. Why we're here today is to ask for your support financially, and emotionally, and physically, and whatever we can for fundraising and grant opportunities. Between the three of us girls, we have to raise four thousand dollars, which is not an easy task for an organization that is brand-new back to Adams City and Lester Arnold. Lester Arnold does not have a history with this organization. Corelli will be the first person to go to the national conference. Her and one other were the first two to go to the state conference at Adams City. Alicia will also be the first student to attend the National Leadership Conference from Adams City, and from Adams City having such a longstanding history. It's, it's amazing to see these leaders come out. So I will be sending each and every one of you my proposal, which outlines all of the workshops, the guest speakers, the five K that they'll get to do at the national conference with the other eight thousand or nine thousand students that will be here, but we need community support and city council support to do fund- It's an amazing experience, not just for networking, but for leadership opportunity. They'll go to workshops, get to hear from other student presenters, they'll get project ideas, learn how they can really embed themselves in the community. I was an FCC LA guru when I was in high school, I too was a state officer. I got to go to the national conference three times, following my sister's footsteps who went twice. Why we're here today is to ask for your support financially and emotionally and physically and whatever we can for fundraising and grant opportunities. Between the three of us girls, we have to raise $4,000, which is not an easy task for an organization that is brand-new back to Adams City and Lester Arnold. Lester Arnold does not have a history with this organization. Corelli will be the first person to go to the national conference. Her and one other were the first two to go to the state conference at Adams City. Alicia will also be the first student to attend the National Leadership Conference from Adams City and from Adams City having such a longstanding history. It's amazing to see these leaders come out. So I will be sending each and every one of you my proposal, which outlines all of the workshops, the guest speakers, the 5K that they'll get to do at the national conference with the other 8,000 or 9,000 students that will be here. But we need community support and city council support to do fundraisers and donations and grant opportunities. So I will get that out to you first thing tomorrow morning. I just want to come tell you guys a little bit more about it.
And just so you know, not only are the folks in the audience listening, but you have folks at home listening as well.
Absolutely.
Because we're televised. Do you have a place where they can donate if they'd like to donate towards the cause?
You know, not right now, but I can set something up very easily. If they call either one of the schools, the secretaries will get you to me.
Okay, and say your name again.
My name is Danielle McCracken, that's M-C-C-R-A-C-K-E-N, McCracken.
Great, I'm just trying to help you out here.
Absolutely, no, it's amazing.
You know, now, I know we have the Quality Community for a Lifetime Grant stuff and I know that has passed. Is there anything that we do have where we can show some support from the city's end for the group? Mr. McBrough, do you have any ideas? I don't want to just throw something out up here, I'd rather lean on you a little bit.
There are always funds available if that's city council's desire. I will also give this young lady my card so she can send the information to me and I'll forward it on to each and every one of you.
Okay. Does council have any comments for these young ladies? You know, I think it's important that we congratulate both the young ladies that have excelled in the program. We are very supportive and hope that you raise all of your funds. And once that the information gets to city manager and distributed to us, I will let you know I will be making a donation.
Thank you.
And I would hope that others will see the need for the community to gather around the interest and investment within our school districts. So good luck to you and I know you'll be successful in raising the funds that are necessary for you to go to nationals and good luck while you're there.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here. Councilman Teeter, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yes, is this the one, competition is going to be in Tennessee?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just so you know, I've already helped donate, but I will also help donate because my granddaughter from peer review qualified to go.
Great. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Now we'll move into the approval of the minutes, April 1st, 2013. What are the council's desires? Mr. McAdonie?
Would move to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the, let me see, I just said it, April 1st, 2013 meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The minutes are approved. We'll now take on the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda this evening. If any member wishes to discuss one of these items in detail or if an audience member have previously asked to speak on one of these items, it will need to be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item? Mr. Bullock?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. McAdonie?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will city attorney please read the title?
Title of ordinance, 1954, reads as follows. An ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on the establishment of any recreational marijuana-related businesses. Title of resolution 2013-26, resolution appointing members to designated boards and commissions of Commerce City.
Great, thank you. Title's been read, I have a motion and a second, I'll ask for a roll call vote. Oh, yeah, and for the record, I need to let the record show that Councilwoman Carson has been a part of the full portion of the regular meeting, but was late to the executive session. And I know that the city clerk may need to clear the board and set it up. Are we good? Perfect. Everybody can vote. Let the record show, the consent agenda is approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ordinance is on second reading. We have ordinance 1955. This ordinance was not included on the consent agenda because it was not approved unanimously on first reading. Does council have any questions regarding this ordinance? Mr. McAdonie, is that for a motion?
It's for a motion.
Okay, any council members have any concerns or questions regarding the ordinance before I move on to taking the motion? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council regarding this ordinance? Seeing none. Mr. McAdonie?
I'd move to approve ordinance 1955.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of ordinance 1955 on second reading. City attorney, please read the title.
Title reads, an ordinance reestablishing the boundaries of the four wards of the city of Commerce City.
Thank you. Ask for a roll call vote. Let the record show that the motion has been carried and the ordinance has been approved on second reading. Next item on the agenda, we go into presentations. I'd like to invite the Dr. Cog representative to come forward and make their presentation. Please state your name and address for us. And good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name is Terri Whitmore, I'm the regional planning and operations director for the Denver Regional Council of Governments. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you today on the Sustainable Communities Initiative and the involvement of Commerce City in this project. I'm going to start off with a presentation after I request permission to distribute some materials to the council. And after that point, I'm going to turn it over to one of our lead executive committee members, Craig Carlson, who will give a bit of an overview from the leadership perspective. So with that, may I have permission to distribute a document of the 2035 plan for Dr. Cog and an overview of the Sustainable Communities Initiative?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. This is going to be a real general overview, but if there's anything that I go over in too, go over in too quick of a manner and there needs to be a little more detail, please let me know, I can stop at any point in time and elaborate. The Sustainable Communities Initiative is a partnership that's led by housing and urban development. It's a HUD program, we received $4.5 million. It was official with a signed contract in February of 2012. It's a three-year grant process. Three years seems like a long period of time, but it's moving very quickly. We're almost at the halfway point and much of the work has been finalizing partnerships, getting agreements, contracts in place. So we're really just, we're getting up and going now with a lot of the great work. And so I'll give you some quick overview items of where we're at and some activities that is there encompassed that will impact in a positive way the city of Commerce City. Primary tasks of what we call SCI, which is the Sustainable Communities Initiative, include funding and direction from the funds with regional planning, corridor implementation, catalytic projects, stakeholder engagement, and what we call the Outcomes Assessment and Knowledge Sharing Project, OCS. A little more detail of the regional planning work that's going to be funded through the grant process. We have a major update that was already underway with Dr. Cog to do the new long-range plan to the year 2040. What I passed out to you is the current plan that's in place to the year 2035. These two processes are in parallel, so the goal is to have by December of 2014, the work for the update of the 2040 plan complete. And most of our Sustainable Communities Initiative work should be complete, so it really aligned well. What the funds are going to provide is for us to bring in expertise to look in more detail at housing and economic development for further refinement of those two concepts in the 2040 plan. In terms of economic development, not necessarily for a regional organization to be doing economic development, but from the perspective of making certain that as we plan on a regional level, that we're consistent with economic plans from our regional EDCs, our economic development departments in cities and counties. And that we are working in concert, that we're collaborating on joint projects where it makes sense and that we're sharing information. And then on the housing side, kind of starting to talk about what we need to consider for workforce housing, making certain that we have housing available in the Denver region for all ages, incomes and abilities. And especially as we look at housing at our station areas as our fast tracks, RTG rail system continues to build out. We have planning and implementation support, so we have what right now is the Regional Equity Atlas. It's a tool that Mile High connects, an organization of philanthropic organizations and leaders in the Denver region have put together that look at everything from where do we have affordable housing, where do we have workforce housing, where are our closest transit centers, to really look at, you know, the nexus of the cost of housing and transportation as it's from an affordability index to make certain that we're providing options for all of our citizens. And a Boomer Bond project is also receiving some funding. That's taking a look at the rapidly aging population in the region. We recognize by the year 2035 that one out of every four individuals in the Denver region is going to be over the age of 60. That means that we're going to have a whole series of new challenges, opportunities that we're going to need to look at from how we design our homes so that people can age in place, to recognizing that we need to have services throughout the region, not just in the central core. So we're going to be looking a little bit at that, doing some case studies and developing some tools and best practices. And then we're also really trying to incorporate a lot of input from stakeholders, going across the entire region, making certain that we involve not, down to the grassroots-level citizen, those impacted by where you might be putting your light rail or commuter rail lines, how they want to make certain that it's not taking away their current fixed route system and making certain that they can access, you know, their homes across the rail line, is there going to be the appropriate considerations for design? And then we're also looking at involving our technical folks, so we've developed a Metrovision Planning Advisory Committee that's encompassed with a lot of our planning professionals and traditionally non-represented expertise across the region, to our citizens advisory committee, where we have developed a broad regional context of citizens who have networks that they can reach out to and so that we can bring in as much input as possible through the process. Corridor implementation, this is the part of the grant that everyone's interested in because this is where we start to look at how we can appropriately plan for our commuter rail, light rail stations. And the grant really wanted us to take a look at things that were shovel-ready, so to speak. And we had the public-private 3P process already in place, the Eagle P3, with the East Line, the Gold Line and the Northwest Line. And also the Bus Rapid Transit up to Boulder on the Northwest Line. And then we also know that the West Line just opened this month and there's opportunities to do some planning at a key catalytic site on the West Line as well. So we're going to be looking at the three corridor planning levels, both at a stakeholder level with citizens, business owners, all the way up to a working group level, looking at our actual jurisdictions sitting at the table. We have Adams County at the table, both at our East Corridor, our Gold Corridor, which we're starting process on right now. And we'll be involving all jurisdictions and all of those corridors that are moving forward as we start to continue to engage all the key individuals throughout the different corridor planning process. And then the idea being that all of those jurisdictions are going to decide on one site per corridor that they're going to focus on for investing some of these funds in more detail to do some pre-planning work. And the best example is West Corridor, who had done their planning before we got this grant, are already looking at implementing some of their plans at the Sheridan site. So they've chosen the Sheridan site as their catalytic site and they're right now finalizing work with a contractor to look at a 20-minute watershed neighborhood and what kind of improvements will need to be done in that particular location. And they're also going to be investing in Urban Land Conservancy's project for the Jody Apartments. So a lot of great work is going on. And this just talks a little bit about the various levels of committees and engagement. I've touched on many of these already, but I think the one thing to mention is we're working with FRESK. It's an organization that's reaching out door-to-door to citizens across all of our key corridors that we're looking at with the East, the Gold and the Northwest, bringing in untraditionally represented populations. We're building leaders through the Transit Alliance with corridor-specific academies. We're developing an East Academy right now. And if you know people in your community that are impacted by the commuter rail in the East and would like to learn more and be a leader and an advocate for the community and the region in transit, they're going to be, we're putting out those applications now and that'll start in June. It'll be, I think, four weeks and we're going to hold it over at the Timbers here off of 70. So it'll be a great program if you know some people that you would like to recommend or encourage to apply. So I just want to put out that tout because it'll be a great program. And with that, I think I've covered most everything else unless there's questions. And then what I'd like to do, if there aren't questions, is turn this over to Craig Carlson, who's a member of our executive committee, who's providing that overall leadership to this grant process. We wanted to make sure that we had high-level individuals, CEO levels, banks, corporate, those parties that really have a vested interest in the community and they could guide this process. So it's not just a plan that sits on the shelf, but these are things that really transform the region.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Mr. Bullock, did you have a question?
No, just before.
Okay, Mr. Douglas.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. That is $4.1 million. It's just kind of divided up as far as how much, I mean, what part of this money could we use as far as looking at different things within our city?
The $4.5 million that we received from HUD was a result of the Dr. Cog region coming together as a collaborative with many partners. We have over 80 partners that were involved with the application process. And the reason that we involved so many is this was the second time that HUD had put this grant out. We did not receive the funding the first round. The reason we received the funding in the second round is as we listened to the feedback that we needed to bring a lot of partners to the table. We needed to lay out how we were going to spend the money, who was going to benefit, how that was all going to be structured, and then we were going to need to have a key governance structure that included leadership from the region all the way up to our corporate level. So that's what we put together in terms of how we have our budget outlined. The area that probably impacts Commerce City the most in it is our East Corridor commuter rail line. We have a stakeholder committee and a working group that right now is meeting, starting to talk about how do we choose that site that's going to be the focus of the funds? So we have money that's set aside for that catalytic site along the East Corridor and then we have some additional technical assistance funds that have not been already outlined for a particular party that will go along that corridor. So there's two pots of funding that will be decided by that working group and the jurisdictions that sit at the table.
Now, what about the Northwest Corridor?
It's the same thing. We have an equivalent amount for each of the three corridors with East, Northwest and Gold.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Councilwoman Carson?
Thank you for the presentation and I just wanted to say that I'm really glad to see that you are partnering up with FRESK. I've attended quite a few of their meetings and I think that they, really with the education that they have done in these areas of transportation, housing and such, that they'll be a valuable partner, so.
Thank you. They've been wonderful partners and have done great work thus far.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing no one else, thank you very much for coming in this evening and giving the presentation. I know our staff will be tracking this intensely. And our representative, Mr. Benson over there? Benson, I got it right? I'm just seeing if you're paying attention, Mr. Benson. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we're excited to talk to Mr. Carlson.
Thank you.
Come on up, Craig, good to see you this evening.
Mayor, members of council, it's a delight to be here this evening, I know most of you personally. Wanted to really go just a little bit beyond where Terri informed you. It's almost fortunate that we didn't get the first round of grants because we were now, we're now able to learn from other communities such as Seattle and Salt Lake who have been through this process slightly ahead of us, you know, and their involvement with both the public sector, the private sector, the economic development groups has been very, very valuable. And I think the best way to look at this entire process that SCI is focusing on is really, you know, so much of the focus with fast tracks and really, you know, so much of the focus with trans, with fast tracks and transit has been focused upon, number one, the dollars and budget, you know, how are we going to get complete? Number two, the actual infrastructure. This HUD grant allows all of our communities to participate in a way that takes it beyond the infrastructure and into our communities. What are we going to build at these stations? You know, how is it going to be implemented? How do we look far into the future to make sure that these, that the efforts that both impact the communities and the communities will benefit from are sustainable in nature? I want you to realize that it's a very, very large consortium of public interest, private interests, and nonprofits. We think it's very, very vital to the entire metropolitan area. We'd love to have Commerce City sign on. There is the formal consortium agreement that has yet to be signed by Commerce City, and it's probably more our fault because we haven't been out there diligently processing that. So, I gave an execution copy to Mr. Gaylor, so.
Great, thank you.
I'm really here just to answer any questions and elicit or show support that both the private sector and a lot of the nonprofits and that the entire organization or consortium has for the efforts that are going on. It is quite unwieldy. It's more of a challenge for the staff at Dr. Cog than really a blessing, but I think it's a very, very vital effort, and we're thankful that we have them there as a resource to manage this grant.
Great. Thank you for coming in, Craig. It's always nice to see you, and I'm glad that there's opportunities out there. Matter of fact, we had a resident not too long ago that's here with us this evening that was concerned about what happens to the community around where our station will be built and the impacts that'll be upon that, that part of the community, and how do we give back in a sense? So, it's nice to know that there's some opportunities out there to engage with the residents in that area that will have some, some impacts that they're not used to. So, I appreciate everything you're doing. I'm going to go to the Council for comments or questions. We'll start with Mr. Benson.
Yes, Mr. Carlson, would you like for us to pass a resolution for the signing of this consortium agreement tonight? Is that what you're looking for tonight?
It doesn't necessarily have to be tonight. We'd be delighted if it were tonight. I know most of you are familiar with the effort. I think you've seen a copy of the agreement previously in previous transmittals. You know, it's a fairly generic document, and again, there are, you know, dozens of other public entities and private entities that have already signed on, so it's gone through the smell test.
Okay. I guess I'd like to hear from the staff. Do you think it's appropriate for us to move to enter into this agreement, or does it need more research by the staff?
Mr. Mayor, we hadn't anticipated that the Council would wish to take action tonight, so we haven't put it on the agenda for action. We'd be happy to review the agreement. We have seen it before. Provide some analysis of that to you to understand what Commerce City's commitment would be where we design the consortium agreement, and then put it on an upcoming agenda for action.
Great, and I think that's the appropriate manner to take. I would, however, like that when we do make a decision to have this on the agenda for consideration, that we invite Dr. Cog folks back to be here when we, when we take that up. Other than that, I don't see anyone, anyone else that has any comments or questions, so thank you again, Mr. Carlson, and thank you from Dr. Cog. Terry, thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move into the QCI update on the stormwater utility portion. Mr. McRum, you want to lead that off?
Mr. Mayor, as part of City Council's deliberations, both at regular meetings and study sessions, to work through the Quality Community Initiative stakeholder groups recommendations, the City Council had asked for us to bring back to City Council some additional analysis of a stormwater utility, particularly other options for how the fee could be structured. So, at Council's request, folks from Public Works are here tonight to present some updated information to you.
Great, thank you. Darren?
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. I'm going to start out with a review of where we were, where we left off last year at our last presentation, which was in July. At that time, we were talking about creating a property impervious database. We had a proposed fee, flat fee for the residential properties of $6, and then we'd already performed the public outreach with a brochure that we created, been to both outreaches, neighborhood outreaches that we do, Derby Days, several city news articles were put out, Business Advisory Council had heard a presentation, and then we'd make four presentations to City Council. And at that time, we had received direction to look at a reduced initial rate for the starting of the project, and so that's where we left off last year. Going into the upcoming schedule, we've got tonight's presentation, which will present a bunch of information that you were looking for as a result of the planning retreat there in February, and then we've got some additional information. If you have other questions that you need us to provide answers to for a discussion later on, we'll be happy to take that information tonight and then present that next week at a study session where we will have some more discussion on the stormwater utility. As far as the implementation, we are looking at about 20 months right now. There's a, we need to go through the process of renewing the database, looking at all the property owners, the ownership, and that sort of thing, and then applying whatever we come up with for a billing rate to those properties. We also have to negotiate the arrangement with the county, County Assessors Office as far as being able to charge the fee through the, through the county. And so, what we're looking at is being able to start billing in 2015, which means that we need to have a rate passed by the Council sometime in July, August timeframe, so that then we can get the bills together and be able to get to the county in time for billing in October, which will then go out in the following year. So, in summary, next one. Thank you. So, in summary of the project remaining items, we got the database that we have to update that I talked about, create the financial and rate policy, which is determining how the rate, how the money will be spent. So, we'll be prioritizing what we do as far as either maintenance or on capital improvements. We've got some options. It'll be coming up that you'll see that there's some choices to be made, which direction we go, whether we go with all of it, excuse me, or part of it. Public education and messaging campaign will be critical going forward, and we will work with Communications to get that out over the next several months to most, into early next year with our, our plan, and that'll be just educating the public, getting out to HOAs and, and various communities around town to educate them on what we're looking at for the, the fee. And then we'll also create the customer service and appeals program. This is training that will be done for not only staff, but as well as the people that we'll hire to help us with the customer service and getting that initial crush of, of people questioning, wanting answers to what's going on. So, we'll have a strong program there going forward. This is the list of additional information needs that the Council identified at the planning retreat back in February. So, we've got collection methods, impacts, range of fee amounts, we'll have that a little bit later, how to decide what rate is fair, we'll talk a little bit about that a little bit later, what the project covers, we're answering that. If there's a delay, what are the risks as a result? As you all know, it's, it's a matter of costs continue to go up, so if we've got capital improvement projects that we're planning to do or want to do, those costs just continue to go up. So, that's really the only thing that's driving this. We do have a little bit in terms of, of additional regulations that are coming on from the EPA with our next permit renewal, which continue to escalate every time the EPA goes through their process of renewing that. And then true costs in the roadmap, I think we've got some of that covered here. So, this brings us up to the, really, the presentation we would have made last August if we had continued with this at that time. And the key, the key piece of where we were at was that right now, the implementing the fee would free up $875,000 out of our current general fund and shift it over to the stormwater utility. And really, that's, that's the benefit to the general fund is moving that cost out and getting it covered in a different way. Current expenditures, right now, we've got the MPDS water quality permit activities, which is, is covered with a staff stormwater coordinator. We go through the CDPS program, site inspections and reports, and, and this person keeps us in line with our permit requirements and, and contact and interaction with the state on a regular basis. Maintenance activities, I'll go into a little more detail about what's covered there, and then engineering and administration on that side, that's a matter of reviewing the erosion and sediment control plans, which are required to be put together, the grading permit, their plans and a permit that follows, and then the administration of all that, issuing the permits and things like that. Current maintenance activities, you'll see that the top two there, street sweeping and mowing, is what we are doing today. We currently sweep all the streets and, and we mow a large, large areas of the city. The, one of the key components there in street sweeping that qualifies is the rubber off of your tires. As your tires wear down, there's rubber on the street. Sometimes you'll notice when it rains, you'll see, see little black trails of where the waters washed that rubber out of the street. That's what we pick up with a sweeper, and so that's, that's a nasty component that gets into the drainage ways, needs to be picked up. There's also debris that come from, from salt and other things that come off of the vehicles as they're using the roadways. Mowing, I don't know if you've ever noticed, but tumbleweeds is one of the things that gets clogged in the drainage system and the culverts and things like that. By mowing, we're able to grind those up, keep them in place, fertilize the land, and then as well, keep them out of our drainage ways, which add to clogging. Two of the areas that we don't have a very good program right now is inlet cleaning and pulp, pipe, culvert, and swale repair. Inlet cleaning, we do on a as-needed basis, and it's, it's a fill-in job on rainy days to go out and clean inlets. It's a dirty, difficult job. We don't have real good equipment to do that, so the guys are down in the inlets with, with buckets and shovels, cleaning them out by hand. I'll get into a little more detail of what we might be looking at in terms of a better, more robust system. And then on the culvert side, we've got culverts that are rotted or, or clogged up, and the only way we really know about that is if we get a complaint from somebody that there's a drainage problem or the culvert's failing or something like that, and then we go out in a more of a reactive mode to go out and fix those. In terms of our needs, capital, capital projects, this is a component where on our existing capital projects, so our roadway and our parks, different things that we're already doing, there's a, there's a stormwater requirement that we put into those projects, and so that's what this $400,000 covers. And then under the permitting review, engineering administration, that's, that again is the stormwater coordinator, the review of the plans and things like that, and then there's additional inspector that we would be bringing on to, to beef up the inspections, which is to comply with the anticipated increase that's coming from the EPA. And then moving down to the engineering planning administration, that gets into the project engineering on capital projects, outfall service plans, which is, is the drainage plants put together by urban drainage that we, we go out and we implement, and that's what identifies the size of the system we need for the main lines. And then there's the fee administration and billing that also gets covered under that. Under the proposed maintenance activities, the first two remain the same, where we beef up the program is in the inlet cleaning and pipe repair. Under the inlet cleaning, what we'd be ending up with is acquiring a Vector truck and some personnel that would go out and clean out these inlets. Using a Vector truck, we're able to vacuum out that debris rather than having somebody do it by hand. And then we would also have the inventory that we'd be maintaining, and our goal is to hit every inlet once a year. If we're able to get to that, they're a lot cleaner when we get through them, so we're able to cover the whole area a lot better than initial, will be a little more time-consuming. Under the pipe repair, what that amounts to is we would build an inventory and a maintenance system, and we identify and prioritize the repairs that are needed out there to the, to the current culvert and swale system, which is the roadside ditches and some of the other swales that go through areas that aren't in the best shape and aren't maintained Thank you. Okay, here's a map, covers all of Commerce City, and it identifies the drainage basins across the city. Moving from the south, we've got Sand Creek, and that purple shaded area is the area that contributes water to Sand Creek. It goes on south into, into Denver. Core part of the city, pretty much covered with the core part of the city and some runoff from, off the arsenal, and then we go up into Irondale. That basin goes all the way back up into Aurora. Right now, we don't see any water coming through it. The, the arsenal has done a really good job of putting in some structures and what have you that keep drainage on, on the arsenal site, and they don't allow it to escape, but they're making changes to their, to their operation, and they've removed one of those dams already, and so eventually, we're going to see stormwater coming down through Irondale Gulch. First Creek, again, that extends all the way back up into Aurora. We do see low flow on a daily basis coming through there. It crosses 96th Avenue into the city, right there by the Peoria entrance to the arsenal, and then it flows on down through, through the First Creek Community Park, through the area where we're doing the 104th Avenue project right there at I-76, and then makes its way over to Bell Creek and on out to the plat. DFA 53, small area that's pretty much totally in Commerce City, drains through some of the neighborhoods like Turnberry, River Oaks, River Run, and Stillwater. We've already got a large pond in there that we'll be able to take advantage of, and so there's improvement slated in there. Second Creek starts up on the, just off of the airport, runs through Aurora, comes on down through the city. That's really the main corridor where we're going to have a lot of recreational option activities in there. We've got trails and other things going on in there. Third Creek, another basin that starts on, pretty much on the airport and drains off through the northeastern part of the city. Terms of drainage improvements that we've identified, we've got Irondale Gulch. This, this number here has nearly doubled since the last time you saw it. Urban Drainage completed their outfall service plans, so those costs has gone up. First Creek infrastructure, $24 million. Second Creek, $2.9 million. Core City, we've got a couple of different little projects I'll get into some detail on the next slide. So, here's two of our priorities in the core part of the city. First one's called the Fernal Trail. It's an old pipe that seen a lot of damage and degradation over the years. We need to get that one replaced fairly soon. It's already falling in, and we need to repair that. The rest of the system is reconstructing the drainage system going all the way back up to Fairfax Park. It'll, it'll be a larger pipe system, which will allow us to drain Fairfax Park much quicker. Right now, it takes several days to drain Fairfax when it fills up, and what happens, another advantage of, of doing this, is we end up with the new improvements that the parks and recreation department put in in Fairfax not being underwater as long as, as it is right now, and so we decrease the degradation of their, their improvements as well, so the public gets to use the park quicker after a storm event. Over in First Creek, we've got three different areas that we need to focus on. One is the Brighton Road crossing of First Creek. That's just north of 104th Avenue, comes out of Bell Creek. Undersized bridge needs to be replaced, and it's not in good condition now, so it's ripe for being replaced. We got a major crossing of Highway 85, generally coming right into the southern edge of Bell Creek. There's a small culvert that, that provides flow for the, for Second Creek in through there, or First Creek, I'm sorry, and it's very inadequate, needs to be replaced, and this, I believe, would have a component in it as well for, for being able to pass pedestrians. Another priority is over in Second Creek. We've got crossing, we got... We've got crossing, we've got the channel down there by Highway I-76, and that's down below the Burnison Ditch. That'll be a channel coming out of the Second Creek Community Park, which allows that water to get out and ties into a drainage system which is established further on down. The number one there is replacing a bridge over Second Creek on Chambers Road. Right now, that bridge is undersized, needs to be replaced to be something similar to what we've already put there on 104th Avenue. Would include a pedestrian crossing and connecting with the trail system that we're building up and down Second Creek. And then the number three is a number of drop structures that would be required. Right now, as flow increases with development, you get trickle flows that flow down through these channels. They never saw that before in the past, and so what happens is you start eroding away and cutting deeper and deeper channels. You can already see some of that going on out there. With this, we would look at putting in drop structures at various locations as we need to cut down on that degradation. So next, I'm going to move into some of the fee proposals that we've got for you to consider. We're going to start with the $6 fee. I know, we know that this isn't what you guys wanted to see, but this is what all of our calculations are based on, so it's where we're starting from. And then we'll break it down into some different options as we go forward. So we've got the permitting and engineering is $0.73 per single-family unit. The maintenance activities equates to $2.46. Capital projects equates to $2.81. First proposal or option for you to consider would be covering all the permitting and engineering and half of the maintenance activity. What this does is it gets us to a fee of $1.96, and what we're doing is we're trying to get this to something that we can define and defend in terms of how the fee was determined rather than just a random fee that we started out with. So this is one option to consider, and we've got several more. This next one would look at doing half of the capital and the permitting and engineering, and that fee works out to be about $2.14 per single-family residential unit. In this option here, we would cover all of the maintenance activities plus the engineering, and that fee would work out to be $3.19, and no capital would be built. And in this option, we would not cover the maintenance activities, but we would cover all the capital. And the thing to think about with any of these options is whether or not we're able to pull out any of that $875,000 that's currently in the general fund. In this situation, the maintenance activity would still remain in the general fund, so we wouldn't pull much out of there, just the engineering portion. And here we are going into a little bit of an example of how it breaks out in terms of the residential, commercial, industrial properties. Now, in one of the comments that we heard at the retreat was that we needed to come up with a flat fee for commercial and industrial properties. Right now, we don't have our consultant available to help dive into the numbers on this and how it works, because we've got to look at all the properties across the city and work out a bunch of detail going back and forth. But this gives you an approximation of what we'd be looking at. And in terms of the fixed fee, what we've got to look at is a situation with these commercial industrial properties, they're not one size. Whereas on the residential side, we've got 11,000 yacht lots in the city, and 90% are a quarter of an acre or less. That's pretty precise, pretty compact in terms of the number that we have to look at. On these commercial industrial properties, we've got variation that goes from very small, I've got an example here of a half acre, another example of a 10-acre parcel, we've got some parcels that are over 100 acres. And so the only fair way to charge on those properties is to do it on something more like a thousand-square-foot basis to capture the varying sizes of the property, because they vary in terms of what they contribute to the stormwater, and so they should vary in what they end up paying. And just to give you an idea, I combined the industrial properties there in those different examples. In the first one, it's a dollar one, if we combined it, it's a dollar 10 if we combine the second one, $1.64 on the third one, and a dollar 82 on the fourth one. And we'll get into some more detail here coming up in the next slide, which gives you an idea on, at those various rates, this is the estimated monthly fee that would be paid on those properties. Notice in this property, it's two and a half acres, there's 40,000 square feet that's impervious, and there's 46,000 square feet that is compacted. So the impervious areas are buildings, your parking lots, sidewalks, things like that. The compacted areas are areas that are not landscaped, they're not paved, but they're using, they're driving on it. It's additional compaction on that ground, it doesn't drain as well. And so in terms of a percentage on this particular piece, 78% of the property is used, being used, and a much smaller portion, as you can see, is dedicated to landscaping and that. So they're generating a lot more runoff, and it's just a matter of them efficiently using their property for what they intend. Here's another example for you. This is a 10-acre parcel. We're looking at a fee of anywhere from $183 to $331 a month. And again, they're using a large portion of their property for their activity. You can see from the blue there, there's a large area, a large, large area that's covered up with paving, and none of this water soaks into the ground or anything, it just runs off. And then the smaller yellow area there is also the compacted area again. And in this case, 71% of the site is being used, and where they make up the land-use area for not being used for landscape, or being used for their activity, it's that landscape strip across the top there. Here's, the next one is an example of a commercial property, really small, half acre, but they're using, 27% of the site is paved. The rest of the site is landscape, dedicated to landscaping, and you can see where their fee is, is in the range of 7.88 to 14.24. So again, you can see that it varies across the board as to how big these properties are, and that's why we need to look at something that's fixed based on some measure like square feet, thousand square feet is what we're proposing. And you've seen this picture before. This represents across the front range, all the cities that are charging stormwater utility fees, and you can see where they vary greatly from $1.14 all the way up to 14.26. What's going on here is cities towards the bottom end are only covering portions of their stormwater utility, so they may be just covering the permit, they may be covering the permit and the maintenance, or they may be doing all capital, but they're doing, they're not hitting the whole picture as we've presented here for you guys to consider. So it varies widely, and the areas outside of urban drainage represents about $1.25 higher in terms of average. And where you can make some rational nexus there is that there's some help coming from urban drainage. They have a limited number of funds based on the size of the county and how much money's contributed in that county, which are available for us to tap into for our capital projects. And as we move forward through this, we will have a funding source hopefully to pay for the projects and partner with urban drainage to build those projects and cut down some of our costs. So with that, that concludes what I've got to present tonight. So what I'd like to hear from you is, what additional information do we need to find to present to you next week for a good conversation?
Mr. Benson.
Darren, thanks for your presentation. I just had a question about one of the slides that I saw about the mowing, and it said bi-yearly. That means once every two years. Is that right?
Twice yearly.
That would be semi-annually then.
Okay.
Instead of bi-annually, okay. Well, that was just, because I thought once every two years was a little too low.
No, it's twice a year.
Okay, semi-annually, okay. Thank you.
Mr. McElhany.
Thank you, Mr. Sterling, for the update tonight. Obviously, some good additional information. The one thing that I think we're missing, and I'm trying to figure out how to put this in context, is the cost of inaction, right? And you've touched on it a couple of times, and we've talked about it in past discussions. Things get more expensive the longer we take to do it. We also have said several times that we want to take this $875,000 out of the general fund and put it into this utility. What does that mean to an average citizen? What does that mean to us, right? Why is that a good thing? Why is that important? To me, the problem we're trying to solve here is an unfunded mandate. We have more things on a laundry list that need to get done than we can do today, right? Those things of that list, we're only able to do a fraction of them. What's the cost to us over time of only being able to do that fraction in perpetuity, right? If we never take action, right, we decide not to pay, we don't bite the bullet, we do a bad job of selling this to our community, making the case to our community, this is what's going to happen, right? We're going to have the Fernal pipe break. It's going to cost us X to replace it in full, right? What's still missing in this picture to me are realistic or digestible chunks that any one of us can walk away and go, holy cow. If we don't do that, oh my God, right? Because the more I listen to this presentation, or these presentations and discussions, I mean, I get it, right? I've been on board from the beginning, but I'm trying to figure out how, how do we help everybody understand in a way that, I'm not an engineer, we're not engineers, but we need to be able to understand what this means. And to me, you know, if I use the analogy of my car, right? I choose not to get an oil change, I choose not to change my tires, I choose not to update my fluids, guess what's going to happen? It's going to cost me how much more at the end of the day to replace those same elements of my vehicle versus maintaining it? We've had the same kind of talk about roads. If I maintain my roads at a certain level, it costs me less over time to maintain those roads than if I let them go to hell, and I've got to build them all over again. So I guess to me, I'm trying to figure out how we explain, again, this $875,000 in the general fund. Well, part of the problem is we've got more stuff than that $875,000 funds to do, right? And getting it out of the general fund is important because, well, our general fund is a variable equation. We never know what we're going to get year to year in revenues to fund the general fund. So that makes it difficult for us to plan in a consistent way what we go solve for in stormwater. And in order to get ahead of the curve on stormwater, we need to have a fixed equation, right? We need to have a set dollar amount coming in, in a predictable way, so that we can actually program those dollars toward that long list of stuff that we just talked about, right? So I just, I want to be careful that we're not brushing by the stuff that's really at issue here, and it's not just we want to get $875,000 out of the general fund. Like, if we don't get that money out and find a way to fund in full stormwater, what's that going to do to us? What are the surprises that we're going to be facing? And, oh, by the way, we don't get to build roads such and such because we've got to go fix such and such a drainage, or we suffer a flood, or whatever. Those are the ways in which I think we have to break this down, because it doesn't, I don't think it translates or gets us where we need it to get us when we just talk about square footages and dollars and cents. We're talking about, at that point, square footages and dollars and cents, as opposed to what is the problem that we're trying to avoid, and what is the cost, right, to ensure that we avoid that sufficiently? What is the cost of inaction? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And in some of the previous presentations, what we talked about was some of the very things you brought up. What happens if we don't do this? We've got pipes that fail, it's aging, infrastructure needs to be replaced. We've got other areas where we don't have drainage systems, like Irondale and First Creek, that aren't well-established and don't have good drainage systems. We could be looking for a problem come down the road with a large rainstorm, which ends up flooding out and washing out neighborhoods, washing out irrigation ditches, which carry a lot of water already, and so we're asking for flooding. It's not comfortable presenting that gloom and doom approach, but that's, the things that you're looking at is a matter of old infrastructure that needs to be replaced, and areas that are growing that need additional work. So we're looking at potentially washing out a bridge, maybe an inconvenience for somebody for quite some time while we go in to replace it. So that would be something we would include in the public outreach.
Yep. I think those examples are important, right? Because, again, I look at the slide, Slide 9, on the current maintenance activities. We're spending $700,000 a year on street sweeping and mowing, right? And it's really easy for us to say, well, street sweeping, street sweeping, right? We need to keep our streets clean. And obviously, you gave some additional examples tonight about we don't rubber in the stormwater. Well, most people don't think about rubber ending up in the stormwater because of driving. I get that we want to get sand and gravel and, you know, deicer and such out of the mix. That all makes sense. But again, when I look at inlet cleaning and pipe, culvert, and swale repair, what's the cost of us not doing those things right now, right? How much are we sort of growing the risk pool, if you will, by not doing those things in an active and aggressive way? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. To answer your question about the inlet in the cleaning situation, it's a matter of some of the stuff that we're not able to sweep these streets every day. So it does rain, and we wash a lot of this stuff into our inlets. We've set them up with what we call sumps, which is an area that captures that initial storm. We settle out the dirt and everything, so we capture it right there. And so that affects water quality. This is all about water quality. And so instead of having that run down into our creeks and our detention ponds and that, we capture it in the inlet, we clean it out. And in terms of the coming requirements of the EPA, we're going to have to go out and do testing on our water to determine how clean it is, and then based on what they find in there, we're going to have to take action to clean that up and get that stuff out of there. That's another one of the components that goes into that.
I guess some of my comments, and I'll let someone else jump in, is I feel like we're trapped in this discussion about the size of the fee, when to me, it's not a matter of seeking a smaller fee, it's seeking sufficient funding to do what needs to be done to a reasonable level. Maybe it's not doing everything immediately, but it's, what's the right number that's going to get us through a catch-up point? Because we're inter ears, right? We've got this challenge of aging infrastructure in part of our community, new infrastructure that's lacking the maintenance in another part of our community. What's the sweet spot to play catch-up and be able to get ahead sufficiently and maintain that new infrastructure without letting it go too far? To me, that's the number that we have to figure out, and then we've got to figure out how to help all of us get our head around why that number is the number. Does that make sense?
Brian?
If I might, Mr. McElhany, your point's a very good one. The point is, through a stormwater utility, to make an investment in infrastructure that will help create a higher-quality community into the future. And we'll look for some other, more specific examples to help illustrate that cost of inaction. I don't know that we can quite put a number on it in total, but I think we can come up with some other examples to help illustrate that point. There absolutely is a cost of not acting, and we'll see how we can pull out some examples to illustrate that better.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Carson.
Just to touch on a little bit of what Jason was saying, I didn't attend the class, but I think it was CML last year, I don't think it was NLC, it was CML, did a class on stormwater drainage. And I heard from quite a few people who attended that, that that was their aha moment. And that, so maybe we could reach out and take a look at the CML site to see if there's a condensed version of their presentation, and if there's even a piece of that presentation that maybe we could go out and present to the citizens, and it would probably even be helpful to council. But like I said, I didn't attend it, but I did hear from quite a few that it was one of the better ones that they had attended, and I think everybody that walked out of there said, oh, I get it now. So if we could take a look into that. And then you were talking about other questions that we needed answered. This one's a small one. I was looking at the graph. I don't see Thornton on there. Do they not charge a stormwater fee?
No, they don't.
I overlook, I don't see Thornton anywhere listed.
They don't charge a fee.
They don't?
We believe they may be tying it up in their water and sewer, but we have no verification of it.
Okay. And then are we looking at all regular residential, no matter what size the lot, it would be the same price?
All single-family residential would be the same price. It's when we get into some of the other things like townhomes and condos where that changes because of the way the owners...
And if they had large acreages, such as farming, and that's different then also, right?
We're going to charge the same, we're proposing to charge the same thing everywhere.
Okay. And then at some point in the beginning, you had talked about doing hiring for customer service in the appeals program. If maybe we could see, are we talking one employee, three employees?
Don't know for sure. Initially, we would, that would be, it would be on a contract basis. We'd probably do it through our consultant, and it'd be for a very short period of time while we ramp up, so there may be three or four people even that are available for that initial period. But once we get through that initial crush, then it would fall back to more what we'll handle with our existing staff.
Okay. So that customer service piece would probably always stay, but that would come back to your department then, and we wouldn't have?
That's correct.
Okay. And then I think I heard through implement, after this is implemented, one of the goals is to hire an additional inspector?
That's correct.
And I've seen some dollar signs here for what we needed to do for maintenance and capital projects. Is that included anywhere in those? Would that come out of this same fund, or would that come out of?
That would come out of the same fund, depending on how we set it up.
Okay.
Either the maintenance or covering the capital, depending on how that gets set up, it may be covered, it may not be.
Okay. And then I just can't figure out where this would fall in. The holding lot for the cars that the railroad uses up there off the highway, is there even a building on that lot? If there is, it's real small, right? So what would that fall under?
That would fall under an industrial lot, and they paved most of the site in order for their parking operation with, you're talking about like the Union Pacific Car Yard?
Uh huh.
That's all paved, so it would be treated as an industrial lot, and it's almost 100% paved. So it would be based on acreage, going with the flat fee basis, we'd be just looking at the acreage of that site and determining the fee.
Because if it's paved, then that means everything totally runs off of it, nothing absorbs in, correct?
That's correct.
And so, all right. What would the flea market be? If that's industrial, then, because that's another large asphalt area, correct?
Flea market, again, would fall in either a commercial or industrial situation, and with a flat fee, we'd be looking at the total acreage of the site for determining the fee. The examples that I had there, we're just looking at the paving and the areas that are unpaved that they're using. But going forward in a flat fee situation, we're just looking at the total acreage.
Now, if they put some form of a retention pond or anything, does that make a difference?
That doesn't make a difference for them. Eventually, with the way the system is being put together, they'll be able to check into our storm source system, connect into it, so they'll be able to drain that, they'll be able to recover some of the retention area, because they can make it smaller. We've got an example of that with the concrete operation up there on 96th Avenue where they make all the pipe and everything. They invested in some additional improvements which allowed them to tap into a swale that drained the water on down to the north, and they were able to shrink their retention pond and use some of that area again. And so nobody would get a credit for that, because eventually, they're going to be able to tap into the storm drainage system.
And then this page 22 that we're looking at, where you're giving us the rates, and it says, "Commercial, a thousand square foot, industrial, a thousand." So does that mean 67 cents for every thousand square foot?
That's correct.
Okay. And so if you're a thousand and one, anything over the thousand?
Yeah. That's based on the impervious square footage that would be on that property in terms of the industrial. And so if, what we've got to come to an agreement with the council on is, in terms of measuring thousands, where's the roundup? Do we say, is the cutoff at 500, and so anything 500 and less is the previous fee, anything above that is the higher? Or do we just say, until you hit that next thousand, you're the previous number? So we round down in that situation. It's not going to make a big difference if we just round down. It's simpler, and it addresses some of the issues that Adams County is getting into right now, because they went to every single little square foot on those properties. By doing thousand square feet, we eliminate a lot of that, because we can go out and measure something, and so it changes by 200 square feet. It's probably not going to kick you down or up either direction to really concern yourself with very much.
So then, just to make sure that I'm not confused, industrial or what, commercial even, you could be charged twice, once for your impervious and once for your compacted?
Right.
Okay.
If you could, well, can follow up one of those, that picture. Okay. So in this example, this is the large lot, so the blue area is their paved area, which amounts to 226,000 square feet. And so we would charge the one rate on that piece, and then on the other piece, the 94,000 compacted area, we would charge the lesser rate if we were going with the two-rate system. But what we're, we don't have that information right now, because we don't have the people that commit, work with the database. And so what we'll need to do is come back to you with actual, better numbers in terms of these sites, because we need to reanalyze them based on a flat rate. But just in general, if we're going off of what we've already been discussing, the blue area would be one rate, the yellow area would be another rate, those numbers would be added together. And that's what's represented here in these numbers, the $183 a month. That takes into account both the blue and the yellow.
Okay. All right. I think that's my list. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation, Darren. When I was looking at your fee options, I noticed that as you broke them out, some of them were half of capital project or half of maintenance and everything. But when I look at fee option number three, if you did half maintenance and half capital, you would still come up with the same amount of money, but you would be able to do both projects. I mean, or even if you couldn't do a big capital project in one year, you were actually saving for it in the second year. So in options like that, why can't we have to split, instead of that 246, have it broken down to 143 and 140, and always have the money there that we're getting projects done or even saving for projects instead of letting one of them lag behind?
No problem. These are, we could repackage this in a multitude of ways. These are just the four that we pulled out for tonight, but that's certainly another option we can, we'll explore.
Thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Dan, for your presentation. I saw, I mean, when I was opening the packet, I saw this, it showed mapping, so I quickly went through there and looked at the map. But I don't see any designated areas where these pipes run, Third Creek, Second Creek, just this map in general, where the pipes at? I mean, that's what I want to see, is where the pipes are laid out, where, in the northern area, how they flow. We're talking about where do we line up with Adams County as far as their water? I mean, theirs just doesn't stop it. We all supposed to go to a certain, flow into a certain area, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Urban drainage, maybe the map just shows the ponds, the roadside ditches. So that's what I think we need. We need to show the people what exactly where our needs are. I mean, we could have a map and show different drainage improvements and all that, but to have a structural map to show which infrastructure is needed in the Irondale Gulch, I mean, you have them listed right here, it'd be nice to see on a map, because that's what I have to tell the residents. I don't want to sell them on anything. I want them to understand this is a need for our city, and put it out there in illustration. Fairfax Park drainage, I know we received a large fund to help those improvements over there. Then I see 6.6, 6.5 million dollars of more money put in there. So it's like, was that properly done in the first place to have additional 6.5 million dollars is a lot for Fairfax Park? Afterward, they just didn't, they just did improvements. So I'm trying to grasp around that concept of more money for Fairfax Park at that amount.
Matt, can you go back to Fairfax? Okay. To address that question, what we're looking at with the 6.4 million dollars is that red line that takes a little zigzag there. That's the storm source system which leaves Fairfax Park, goes down 69th Avenue, crosses 85, heads north up, I believe that's Dahlia Street to 70th, and then it runs out to the west on 70th. We'd be replacing that storm source system. So the impact of our construction on the park is very minimal. You see an area where there's a box and a grate and everything, where the water leaves the park in the very far northwest corner. That's the area we'd be touching with our project. As far as the improvements made in the park, we wouldn't be touching those at all, so there's no impact on what they've already built.
All right. So that, and that 6 million dollars concludes tearing up roads and whatever to get to those pipes, correct?
That's correct.
So since you have that already mapped out, what about connecting the other parts that lead to that? You have the Brighton Road Crossing, and you have those laid out as well, but just to show illustration on a map, because I know, the reason why I'm asking about a map, because I looked outside of our, even our state, or even interstate, and there's several cities that list their storm drains, and they show the piping and the flow of the water and where those all connect. Because that's what we have to really tell the public, tell the residents how this affects, just like Jason said, when this water comes in, how it flows, where it collects, and we're going to have the most damage. So that's what I would like to see is that flow, when the water flows. Maybe we can have a video to explain to people how the water starts, where it flows, and the type of problems they're run into. I mean, the water runs to here and then it drains off to nowhere, but we need to, how the water continue to flow down to catch up to this area here, and when all these things challenge and flow together, we have a better system. And then also, working together, because I know you talk about water quality and EPA comes out, but we don't run, we don't run that type of water as far as the purity of it, because it, we have waste management. I know the sewage goes down there, and does this water eventually flow down the area too? And does it, what percentage of this water comes back to us or goes to South Adams water?
None.
None?
None. The stormwater, when the rain falls, snow falls, it hits the ground, runs off into the street, runs down the gutter into the storm source system, and down into one of these creeks that I identified. And from there, it runs down to the Platte River, and it doesn't get back into South Adams, although South Adams could have water rights on one of those creeks and they could pull water off if they needed to or wanted to. And they do do that in some places. Freiko, they've got water rights on all those ditches, on all those creeks, and they do take off water. But that's a matter of stormwater going into their irrigation water. It can be created into municipal again, but it's not anything that we manage.
Right.
In terms of the storm source system, what we'll do for next week is we'll print out a couple of examples of areas. The detail that that gets into is very minute. It gets down to a very small scale. And so to be able to show you on just one map is really going to be difficult, but we'll print out an area just to give you an idea of what the system looks like. And we've got that covering all of the city where we've got an existing storm source system. Some of the areas such as Irondale Gulch and First Creek, there is no system up there that we can, we've got that we can show you, because it doesn't exist yet.
So what's there is just ditches?
Right now, their water flows off into some of the roadside ditches. There's a few channels in some places that carry water, but for the most part, it just, it runs down the streets and the ditches and it seeps into the ground, and some of it gets to a low spot which begins to make its way. With what we're proposing in our capital improvement side, we'd be able to begin to define more solidly where that path of flow would go through the area so that we can drain that area properly.
Yeah. I don't mean like interstate where the water flows from here and connects there, but you could show how the water flows from north and west channels too. And I could even for you this map to show you what I'm trying to illustrate.
If I may, we do have a project going on right now.
Okay.
Where we're taking the storm drainage system, working with GIS, to narrow it down into smaller areas which show where the water flows for the benefit of our fire department, the water district, and the police department, so that when we do have a water break or a spill or something, they're going to be able to go to this map, and it will show them exactly where they're standing and where the water from that spot goes to, so that they can, they can follow the system and make sure that they don't run into problems with getting into the detention ponds or into the river or something like that, so they can stop that. That's a project that we've already got underway.
Okay. The other thing too about impervious surfaces, I know, you know, homes built today, they have the planted roof, they have the swells in the backyard and the side yards, A and B grades. So when the water shuts out the homes, it's supposed to flow down on the side of your, on both sides of your home, and then flow out to the gutter and then down into the storm drain. There's areas like, I know, just for instance, Reunion, they, in their fees, they charge for storm drain. So if they're already collecting that money, shouldn't that money be diverted to the city for what they're collecting? If we're going to be on this program, I mean, that's something to think about. I mean, if they're already collecting X amount of dollars per resident, find out how much that is, and we should be able to receive that.
We talked with the people who operate the metro district out there, they budget about $6,500 a year for drainage maintenance, and they've got some of their own drainage maintenance that they're required to do within the subdivision. So they've got a water quality pond within their site that they have to maintain, and they've got some other onsite things that they need to take care of. That's what their money goes for. It doesn't go for any of the street sweeping or cleaning the inlets or anything in the major drainage way. It doesn't cover any of that. It just covers some stuff that they're responsible for onsite, which is not what we're proposing to cover.
Okay. Because I know the residents are paying for those, that 65, whatever, 5 cents, whatever it is, amount of $6,500, they're not paying for that, the metro district. They're collecting those funds, isn't that correct?
I'm not completely sure what, you know, what it is. I know that we, when this question came up about a year ago, we did talk with them about what they were doing, and they said it was just a placeholder and it was only about $6,500.
So if there's going to be any improvements, that includes that area as well, right? So if they're, just say, for instance, those pipes break down in that area, supposedly that's been already constructed, that's all part of the city, correct?
If it's in an area that the city's already accepted, we're responsible for maintaining that storm source system. If it's in an area that hasn't been accepted and they come up with some sort of problem, so let's say they've got improvements that they built to a spot, and then they stopped construction in that part of the subdivision, and there needs to be, and something happens to that infrastructure that they built, it's just sitting there, that would be on them to repair, but that would be probably more through their upfront construction. So probably the metro district would take care of that rather than, as part of the construction side, it's not on, it's not something the city's taking care of, but it's something as part of their infrastructure development.
Okay. And then businesses, just say, a newly developed business, based on our, just say, not land development code, but building structure, building codes. Now, if they already had, just to offset some cost, I know you have, you haven't here half the cost on certain areas that, if they already went and mitigated some of those areas to make sure where the water comes off their property, it flows the right way, are they still going to be impacted the same way? Is there anybody else, or are they going to? Is everybody else, or are they going to get a break since they've already built that into their, their infrastructure?
Everybody will be, be impacted the same. It's a matter of, um, maintaining the system in that situation, and so we've got, just like I was talking about earlier, we've got old part of town, new part of town. We've got things to replace in the, in the old part of town, in the new part of town. We've got stuff to maintain, so we're gonna, we're gonna go in and, we're gonna clean those inlets, we're gonna sweep those streets. So it's a maintenance type thing on that end. But then there's other areas such as in Second Creek, they're going to need additional work. And so every development that's, that's developed today has certain amount of drainage infrastructure that's included with it, which includes water quality and, and detention, and maybe retention, depending on whether or not we have a storm sewer system. But they're all required to have it. And so what we're proposing is, is more a matter of, of maintaining, once it leaves their property, gets into the public system, and maintaining it from that point on.
And then just the last thing, um, the areas around the railroad tracks, are we going to get any help from them as far as money to, to help?
It would, it would really be nice, but it's doubtful that we'd be able to charge them any kind of fee. I don't believe that they even pay property taxes right now, so being able to bill them for, for storm water is really highly doubtful.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Amador.
Thank you for the immense amount of information provided in the slides. First, I, I want to choose my words, my words carefully. First, I'd like to term citizens first, and that's the reason that we're all here today, is for the citizens, and, um, because there's a mandate that's out there. We understand that and the improvements that will have to be made for maintenance, um, for storm water. I'm looking at, uh, terming the second term of equity, and with equity, I'm looking at, uh, slide 24, where we have a fee from a dollar ninety-six to three dollars and fifty-four cents. With that being said, um, I believe someone else looked at this as if you were to buy a car, and there's zero dollar maintenance, so you would say, we're going to go ahead and buy a car, but we're not going to give you any money for gas or anything like that. So that's kind of odd to me. Renee did touch on maybe reallocating funds, and you did say that, you know, um, for maintenance, we could potentially break even, but the slide 24 really jumps out at me, actually, it might be 25 then, uh, well, 23. Anyway, the industrial example, large lot, if, um, the estimated monthly fee of $331 for an industrial lot, large, uh, on just the three dollars and fifty-four cents translates to about $4,000 a year for a business, um, within the city. And we go to the business and we say, you need to pay this if we decide to do that. I, I would say if I was a car salesman and I sold you the car, and now I'm going to come back and say, oh yeah, by the way, you have to purchase the maintenance agreement no matter what. Um, I kind of have, uh, some issues with that, and I, so I think that, um, on a case-by-case basis, it wouldn't be fair or an equitable solution to say that someone would be paying, you know, a lot less than I'm paying, so I'm looking at that. And then the last term that I would definitely say is from an accountability. And for all of us here as the council, and for staff and the city, um, we need to be accountable and, and make sure that we say exactly where these funds are going and how they're being allocated. And I think that's going to be part of the education piece for everyone, um, within the city. So I, I would definitely caution when I see six dollars, and if I translate that to the large lot, at, at six dollars, um, that is definitely a huge impact for a business, I would say after the fact on the maintenance agreement. So, I understand maybe there could be provisions on a case-by-case basis that would definitely have to be looked at for impervious, non-impervious, uh, compacted. And if that does translate for the industrial zones and commercial zones, I would also like to potentially see that on a residential property as well. Not everyone has a totally concrete yard, and, um, from an equity standpoint, if, I, I know it gets, it, it throws a wrench in everything, but I think we need to consider that. So, those are my two cents.
Mr. Macaldoney.
I'm trying to think of the way to say what I want to say. I feel like we're having the wrong discussion still. And I can see in staff's eyes that we're missing something. We're not connecting, and, and I, um, I don't know how to bridge that. Um, I, I found an example of a presentation online called Stormwater 101, and I feel like, quite frankly, we need to have a Stormwater 101. I think, I think there's a, there've been elements of that in past discussions, but I think there is a, we have to make sure that we're all coming from the exact same place in terms of understanding what it is we're talking about, right? This is a system, right? And Andrew gets it from an architecture perspective, right? A building is a system of piece parts, right? And each piece plays a different role. You take some of those pieces out of the mix, the whole thing doesn't work right. You build it wrong, the wrong winds come up, the wrong snow load, whatever, you're going to have a bad, bad building, you're going to have problems. So, how do we, again, how do we all make sure we have the same understanding of what the piece parts of this stormwater system are? And then look at our own examples of aging infrastructure requiring capital and ongoing maintenance, and existing newer environment, and the maintenance that's got to happen to make sure that we don't have major capital costs or replacement costs. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. We will, we've, we've got access to some videos that will help with that, and we will look at putting together a, a Stormwater 101 to, uh, help educate the council on, on all the details of, of stormwater, as well as what's required under the, the MPDS program.
Okay. That would be great. I mean, I feel like if we could have a study session where that was really kind of where we began and how, I feel like if we went through that and then came back into some of these past discussions, things might start to click. And I guess, you know, to Ms. Carson's point on the CML presentation, it sounds like that had a similar effect on some. Part of it is, when you say, uh, you know, pick a word, right, pick a technical term in that system, I don't know that we all have the exact sentimental picture of what that means. So, that to me is a key piece of this. Do we know the lingo? Do we know what it means? How do the puzzle pieces fit together? If I take a puzzle piece out, do we all understand what the impact of that is? And once we're at that point, I think we can have a, a really constructive discussion about this, and then we'll have, and the right discussion. Does that make sense? So, I appreciate you, you bringing me and listening to my comments. I, I genuinely want to see us get to the right place with this, because I, I feel like, and maybe this is the comment that I was going to start with, you mentioned on one of the projects that it's probably now, the price that you show us is probably two times what it was when we talked last time, right? I think part of what we have to do every time we talk about this, is you've got to give us a score sheet that says, when we first talked about these 10 projects, the cost was X, and here's the price per project. We've now spent two years talking about this. Guess what? Each of these projects are now X. They've increased by Y dollars each, right? We talk about this in another year because we haven't pulled the trigger? Here's the projection of what these are going to cost at that point, right? We've got to start putting dollars and cents to these things in a way that we understand, again, it's the cost of inaction. Sometimes people like to not make a decision, because it gets the easier thing to do. What's the cost of not making a decision?
We'll work on showing it.
Mr. Bullock.
Uh, I just want to make one thing clear, that the money that comes in for the impact fee for stormwater stays in stormwater. It isn't transferred out to other funds and used for other projects. Stormwater impact fee money is spent in stormwater impact fee projects, and it isn't diverted.
That is, that is correct. It stay, and in fact, it, it stays within the basin that it's collected in, and so we've got impact fees on Area 0053, which goes through the River Run area. That money stays in there. Money in Second Creek stays in Second Creek, and, uh, do we have, I think we have one for Third Creek. Money, money collected in Third Creek stays in Third Creek, and it's, it's only, it's restricted to, to, uh, certain drainage improvements that are identified as part of the fee.
And the money that we would collect if we implement this stormwater fee does not get diverted for any other CIPP project, does not get diverted to any other projects. It will stay and be used only to implement stormwater, even in a year where we have short projects and don't need it all. It still stays, and we just use it, and we bank it to use it on future projects, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And also, as far as what we've shown you in terms of cost, that doesn't include what we're, we're proposing or, or we're, we're covering with the impact fee. So we're not double dipping with what we've, what we've shown you. It's, it's certain things are covered by the impact fee, certain other things are covered, because we didn't, we couldn't, if we had included everything in that water, in that drainage impact fee, the builders would have been screaming all over the place, yelling at you guys for, for doing that, because the fee would be too high for them to, to be able to develop. So we, we targeted specific big things that made sense in terms of, of big dollars that needed to cover, improvements that really, really made a difference. So, like, you didn't see some of the regional detention ponds up there. Those are included in the drainage impact fee, not in the stormwater utility.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
Um, just wanted to add, you know, last year, how we, we were trying to bring this forward, um, in the manner we did, we did discuss the six dollar fee and taking the extra money and put them towards other CIPP projects. So this right here will narrow, narrow it down to just, um, just like you said, as far as, just for water structure, which is, which is fine. So, I understand that, it's, it's, and I think everybody here understands, it's just making sure the public is aware of where we're going with this, and that's, that's why this is really important. And as far as the time and the cost that it's going to take to, to get this, well, for one thing, we would have some, uh, our weather pattern, we've been, you know, last year we had a, a very dry summer. Uh, I know years past, we've had the street sweepers come out and street sweep. I haven't seen a street sweeper come down in a long time, um, even through certain areas. I know we're, we're using different, um, type of maintenance to, uh, combat the ice when it builds up, um, so that, that helps out as well. So, and then I know the issues with the South Adams there, trying to wrap, uh, that whole thing together. So I do think we need to reach out, uh, with our partners, um, with the county and all, make sure we're all on the same page, because when we go through this project, we don't want them doing something twice. When they're working on something, maybe we can join in what they're doing, so it helps lessen our cost. Um, so just want to keep that in mind. So I'm looking forward next week, uh, to dive into this more, and if you come back to, to, to see that map. I, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Just, uh, just a matter of note, in terms of street sweeping, um, street sweepers are mothballed from roughly December through March. Um, the street, they've only been out for about a month now sweeping, and so it, it takes them a while on that first initial pass through the city, and then I think they're on like an eight-week schedule, um, of sweeping. But that initial, that initial pass takes a while, so they've only been out for about six weeks, five weeks, something like that, so, uh, they'll get there.
Yeah, I guess it's my turn, and, uh, everybody here knows that this has kind of touched a nerve for me over time, and I want to be as eloquent as I can about the discussion I want to have tonight. I don't disagree with Mr. Macaldoney. I think that it's important that we educate, um, all of our residents what stormwater needs we have. I, I think it's important to note that we've come from that fifteen-dollar range down to, uh, between a dollar ninety-six and three fifty-four for residential, which I think is important that we continue to work on how we, if this gets implemented in the best way that it gets implemented. I would have to say that I don't think there's probably anybody here that understands the system better than I do after working on it for 10 years. And, uh, I have lifted every inlet box in the core city, uh, with a pick and shoveled out every single inlet box. I know where the water goes. I've dealt with Fairfax Park when it's, uh, been to its, to its banks, um, the, the holding pond on the dog track. I've, uh, I've dealt with all of them, Cole's Hole, and the improvements that were done there. And the thing that I want to make sure is that we're transparent to our residents, to make sure that they understand what's what. Um, I do have to ask, how many bridges do we have that the city owns that are over the Platte River?
City-owned bridges over the Platte River, part of one. The York Street Bridge, we own the eastern quarter of the bridge. The rest of the bridge belongs to Adams County.
Right.
And none of the other bridges over the Platte River do we own.
Right. And I know that. Um, I, just talking about flooding and washing away bridges and, and some of the things that, that bother me, I, I don't want to, um, look at this from a scare tactic standpoint. I want to look at it from a realistic standpoint. I was born and raised here. I've lived here my whole life. I've been, worked for the city in the maintenance department, cleaning out from under, under bridges and canals and ditches, and I understand the ditch system. I'm a water broker by trade, that's what I do. Um, I know, uh, the ditches, they can, can adjust those flows. I know when it comes to South Adams, there's a huge amount of infiltration of stormwater into their sanitary system, um, that impacts the, the sewer plant. Um, I think I understand the system very well, and I, I don't want the residents to think we're going to start washing bridges out on the Platte River or anywhere else, and especially the new bridges that we've installed based on hundred-year flood type of scenarios on Second Creek, on 104th. I know there are some needs, and I know the needs in the past. Uh, matter of fact, drain cleaning was a big part of what I did with, uh, with the city for years. Uh, street sweeping's been something that we've always funded, um, when it comes down to, uh, improvements and replacement of, of pore systems and, and maintaining those. We always worked through an SID, Special Improvement District pro, process, um, and I, I think the last one I recall was in the, the area around Fairfax Park neighborhood, and we charged a, a per-front footage fee for the improvements into the storm sewer system in that area. So I know, I know that there has been a, a process of how to maintain, improve, and, and maintenance these, these stormwater systems, and I'm not discounting the fact that we can do it better. I'm not discounting the fact that, um, we, we may need to have an alternative revenue stream to cover some of these needs. And I want to make that clear. But I want to also make clear that when, when we're talking to the residents, I don't want to say, we're going to wash out a bridge, because I know development standards, flood plain standards, we're not building homes in flood plains, we're, we're pretty proactive about how we do things, and, and, uh, if there's a need for maintaining a system, I don't think we should go to the point of, well, we're going to flood homes, or we're going to, we're going to take out bridges. I think the one area in town that has had a problem over time has been that Fairfax Park neighborhood, and I know we've put in major improvements, and we continue to put those improvements in. And, uh, the last time that we, we actually discussed it with some of the folks in that neighborhood, that, uh, these gates on Fairfax would help, um, and, and that the flooding issues after having the SID and, and the other things that took place, it's going to help. Not that the line doesn't need to be expanded on the outfall going over and, and dumping into the plat. Um, the other thing is, I know when we started to develop up north, we changed the style of inlets that we, uh, put into, um, our developments. From, what did they call the old one with the grate that we picked up with the pick?
The old one was called a Type 13. The new one is called a Type R.
That's the difference. The Type R, and I know, um, that right now we have, uh, there are manhole in the sidewalk rather than a, a grate in the street, so that everybody understands what that means. Um, when we went to that new design, we didn't, uh, implement the, uh, equipment necessary to maintain that stuff. necessary to maintain that style of drain. We required it. And I don't want that piece of equipment to be held hostage to the stormwater maintenance program. I think that if we have employees now that are having to drop down into manholes, and some of them are extremely deep, to clean those and maintain those, that that shouldn't be a, a reason to use this as a leverage to get that equipment. I think if we need the equipment, that we need to see a proposal from the department and pursue that type of equipment. And I'm just trying to level the playing field for our residents to understand what this means to them, what it means to us. I'm not discounting the fact that we can do a better job of maintaining our storm sewers or improving our storm sewers if we had a fee in place. I just want to make sure that they understand that, how that fee would go. And I think that goes back to Mr. McAdonnie's discussion about having a stormwater 101. Because I can't sit here all night and explain my knowledge of storm sewers. And I know my knowledge of storm sewers isn't as good as some other folks. I'm just saying that I've worked on our system a lot. And I've lived in the community a long time. And I, I don't want to scare the residents. I do need to bring up and would like to know how, how this and what these kind of fees would be for a facility like Rush Truck Center that's moving in, and how that's going to affect them and, and impact them. Because I see the, the five-acre and the 10-acre pieces. But when we get up into those large, large parcels that, you know, we have 72 trucking companies, we have some major warehouse type of facilities that have massive acreage, and what kind of impact that's going to be. And I want to make sure that we can continue to stay competitive with the other communities around us. So that's important to me. And I'd like to see the numbers on those, those, on the larger end of our industrial and commercial pieces. I also want to know and have had questions, Danny Thomas is in the audience, and I know he's going to appreciate me bringing this up. He has a trailer park facility up here on Highway 2. Does that fall under commercial? Does it fall under residential based on how many spaces? And does each trailer get impacted on a residential fee? Does the whole thing go as a industrial or commercial piece? And does he get impacted based on his square footage? Because that's a lot of pavement. And, and I know he's got to be concerned about what those costs are going to be. And I think, I think being honest with our residents and trying to vet this out helps them to understand what it could be. And I know his conversation was, "Do I have to pay one or the other? Am I getting hit with both? What am I looking at?" And it's the bottom line that is going to affect our residents. So if you could answer that one while he's in the room, what does a, what does a trailer park fall under? And, and is it going to be square footage or per-space fee based on residential?
Not knowing all the details about how this is going to come together, but I would say that it's going to, it's going to be charged as one property. It's all under one ownership. So it'll be one property. And depending on whether or not we go the route of, of charging for just the impervious area and the compacted area, or if we just go on a very flat fee based on the area of the lot, that number's going to vary. But it's only going to be one number. They'll, they'll just see one number for the lot. It'll be broken down depending on how, how we end up with the, the fee at the end.
Okay. And, and those are the kind of questions that are coming to me. And I think it's important that we vet those as we move through this. I, I think it's also important that we, we watch and, and, and pay attention to what the county's going through and, and how that ends up. I don't want to get too anxious. I don't disagree with Mr. McAdonnie that the costs go up and we can't wait all, you know, for, for too long before we have to make some, make some decisions to move forward on how we're going to take care of these, these issues. And also, we're going to be going to a ballot issue for the residents to decide whether or not they want to make some major capital improvements to transportation and recreation and things of that nature. And I don't want to hit them all at one time. So I want to, I want to be careful about how we move this thing forward. And I want to make sure that the residents are comfortable with whatever happens. So, so I'm still in the place I have been. I'm just trying to be a little bit easier to talk to about it and explain what my concerns are. I do think the stormwater 101 is going to help, but I, I definitely want to, to not lean towards concerning people that if they don't participate, their home's going to flood or we're going to wash out a bridge. I want to be careful about that. So with that said, thank you for your presentation. I look forward to having some, some of the questions answered that the council have brought up this evening.
I'd just like to add that we are watching what's going on in Adams County because we know that that is definitely in our neighborhood and that we need to pay attention to what they did, learned from, from their mistakes. As we've put together the fee from early on, the county was looking at very detailed charging calculations, everything of the residents. And that's what's gotten them into, into trouble. Because they've gotten down to trying to calculate down to the foot, square foot on a property, what's impervious and what's not. With our, our flat fee, it, it's just, it evens out. It's blanket over everybody. Everybody's paying the same fee over the residential area. So we don't have to get into the, the detail of calculating that on each and every parcel, which is very tedious, very time-consuming, and it's probably money not well spent. And so that's why going with the flat fee and looking at that is, is, we think is a better way to go.
Okay. And I have, I have one other comment. You talked about how the money generated in a basin is going to stay within that basin. And not that I'm opposed to that, I just want to make note that, like the Third Creek Basin where it runs, runs, comes from the arsenal and, and to the north, with no industrial, commercial of any major magnitude like we have in the south, they're only going to get a residential benefit off of that. And that, that particular fund won't grow at the rate that the Sand Creek Basin area with all of the large lot industrial that's paying a higher rate is going to grow at. So we're going to end up with another situation where there may be needs in one area that's more residential and fewer needs in an area that's more industrial. And you're going to have a lot bigger pocket of change in one district versus another. And, you know, it's, it's how are we going to balance that? And I just want to make sure that that, that's the appropriate way to go to keep it in those basins. I'm not opposed to keeping it all in the stormwater system so that that money can't be used for anything other than stormwater. But I, I think it's important to note that the area that runs through the industrial components, and you had the Sand Creek piece, and then what was the next piece up there around 96 that comes down through?
We have Irondale and First Creek up there.
Right. First Creek is what I'm talking about, where it goes through all the bulk of the industrial areas and those large impervious surfaces, based on square mile. They're going to generate a lot more fee than a residential component. And how are you going to offset those needs? Because that residential need may have more need than an industrial need. So basin to basin, I'm just worried about, I see, I see the certain basins growing large dollars and other basins not growing large dollars and, and maybe the needs, you know, I'm just worried about a balance there. Ryan?
Just a point of clarification. The idea of keeping fees within the basin was really just referring to drainage impact fees. If a stormwater utility were to be created, revenue generated throughout the utility could be spent throughout the community.
Okay. And that's where I was misunderstanding it. Because when Mr. Bullock had his comments, I was assuming that the money raised off of the stormwater impact fee would stay in those basins. And if that's the case, you would have an issue with, with dollars over time.
This is where the terminology comes in, right? Because we're talking about stormwater impact fee, which is collected upfront during the development cycle, right? This is not a, the, the other fee we're talking about tonight is a stormwater fee, period, not an impact fee. And that is a citywide aggregate pool of dollars to be spent on maintenance and capital.
And I knew which one we were talking about tonight. So when he had his comment...
But they get blurred.
Right. I just wanted to make sure. If we go basin to basin on those dollars, you're going to end up with big pots of money on the, the far south end of town and, and not so much on the north end of town. So we've got to be real careful about tying those dollars if we're looking at regional benefits for our community. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Move on into the agenda. Now we're going to talk about the first quarter work plan. Mr. McBrough, you want to lead that off?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. At the beginning of the year, city staff put together a comprehensive work plan to cover both operations and capital improvement projects. The, the work for the work plan actually began when city council adopted the 2013 budget last fall. The city has been a very financially sound organization for many, many years. A key to that success over time has been, in my opinion, very efficient use of resources while still providing excellent services to the Commerce City community. The 2013 work plan is really just an updated means of measuring our effectiveness at delivering services while demonstrating our progress towards achieving goals that, again, we established at the beginning of, of the year. An important feature of the work plan is also showing clear linkages between the work that staff undertakes on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, how that work is linked back to city council's long-term goals for the Commerce City community. The point is, everything that city staff does has a purpose, and that purpose is set by city council through the adoption of broad, long-range goals for the Commerce City community. So what we'd like to do tonight, we shared with council the work plan at city council's retreat back in February. We're committed to providing updates on a quarterly basis on our progress. And so we'd like to walk you through our first quarterly update based on the 2013 work plan. But the first thing to acknowledge is that at city council's retreat in February, we got some additional work. City council received the QCI stakeholder group's recommendations in January. You discussed them at length in early February. And as a result of that, you've asked staff to do quite a bit of additional work to help city council process those recommendations and decide ultimately if you'd like to pursue some ways of increasing the city's revenue to pay for some of these key long-term projects. So although those aren't reflected directly in the work plan, clearly that's a, that's a significant priority for staff that we're continuing to work on. In fact, a good portion of tonight's agenda is really related back to helping council process and develop an action, an action plan of those QCI recommendations. About the work plans themselves, we've, we really have two separate work plans. We have a work plan that's focused on city operations, which, as you may recall, is a vast majority of what we do day in and day out. We would estimate about 80% of the city's annual budget is dedicated towards running daily operations. But we also have a, a fair amount of our budget dedicated to capital improvement projects. So there's a separate work plan that lists significant capital improvement projects for 2013. In both cases, there's summary sheets included in your packet to present the individual projects within each work plan in a spreadsheet format. One of the most important features is tying each action, each element of those work plans back to city council's goals. Those goals drive everything that we do. And so it's important for us to demonstrate that the work we're doing on a daily basis is helping to achieve city council's long-range goals for the community. We, as staff, love spreadsheets and love data, but we recognize that for city council and for the community, spreadsheets and data aren't the best way to reflect our progress on a quarterly basis. So we've put together these summary sheets to help highlight key things that have occurred during the previous quarter. We've provided more information in the packet, but for presentation purposes tonight, we'd like to run through these summary sheets. We provided a summary sheet for each department. The sheet itself is a summary, but to, to further move along the presentation tonight, I'd just like to take a few minutes and read through the information that's in each of the highlights in key points box, which is on the right side of each slide. The first department, Human Resources, as you all know, the HR director position opened and a search began for a new director. Once the HR director position is filled, projects can be refocused and led by the HR director. The Human Resources Department is also actively working on the recruitment of 10 police officer positions. And overall, the city has about 200 to 300 open positions each year that our HR department leads the effort to fill. Our communications division, the employee survey that we conducted last December indicated a positive shift in overall internal communications within the organization. That's been a key priority of ours in the city manager's office. In addition, the division received awards from the Association of Marketing Communications Professionals. One was a gold award for the city's redefining commerce video and an honorable mention for the interactive ICSE map that communications put together for our economic development folks. Our information technology department, they've been working hard on virtualization technology, which will help combine our 28 previous physical servers into perhaps as few as six physical servers, which is a tremendous advancement in technology that lessens our overall maintenance and also makes our networks much more reliable. In addition, Information Technology has purchased new court video arraignment system technology and will be working to install the equipment in the second quarter. Finance, our finance department with the Buffalo runs, sorry, with the Buffalo Highlands Agreement and the ECA-GID, the groundwork for E470 corridor and 96th Avenue development is in place. Also, in the first quarter, the finance director assumed the interim director of human resources position. Roger has been filling that position on an interim basis. Additionally, almost $8 million of first quarter revenue came in from sales and use tax, with the second most significantly lower than our sales and use tax, at 1.1 million is our property tax. That's typically the case. A vast majority of our revenue comes from sales and use tax. Our clerk's office processed double the passport applications in the first quarter compared to the first quarter of last year. Election activity will increase in the third quarter of this year as four of you are up for reelection. Contracts, ordinances, and resolutions are maintained in both paper and electronic format. Most folks may not realize that in this electronic age, it is still necessary to maintain a number of documents in paper format. And most contracts we maintain have a lifespan of six years. In the city manager's office, staff participates in regular meetings with the Minority Business Association, the Metro North Chambers Business and Governmental Affairs Group. We acquired some water credits in the first quarter. As noted, we had, the HR director position became vacant and also our intergovernmental relations manager position. As I mentioned previously, we've not moved to fill that position just yet. We're kind of waiting to see how the, how the budget plays out this year and see how we might be able to shift those work duties around. And also, I had all-hands meetings with all employees throughout the organization. We had a series of all-hands meetings in the first quarter. It's a chance to share with employees key council objectives for the year. It's an opportunity to share feedback from employees to share feedback with me. I've, I've found them to be extremely valuable. Our economic development division, you heard last week about Rush Truck Center's commitment to build a new facility in Commerce City, including over $13 million in capital investment and 25 new jobs. Economic Development is currently managing 30 active prospects. And a big push right now is full preparation for the ICSE trip coming up in just a couple of weeks. Our Parks and Recreation Department is making significant progress on Fairfax Park. We talked about that a little bit earlier. Completion is, is already behind us for underground utility work and the maintenance building. Also, the footsail courts and grading for the footsail courts is done. The basketball court, perimeter trail, sidewalk, and irrigation system are just about done. And the Bison Grill had three sold-out events in the first quarter, New Year's Eve, Valentine's Dinner, and Easter brunch. Public works has seen an increase in right-of-way permits. And something folks may not know, we have a relatively small facilities maintenance division, but they have a tremendous workload. We have 26 city buildings. These folks carry out all inspections, provide 24/7 emergency service for all 26 of those buildings. And as Mr. Sterling mentioned earlier, in the first quarter, we, towards the end of the first quarter, we began our annual street sweeping effort. first quarter, we began our annual street sweeping effort. Community Development has seen an increase in building permits. That's ahead of what we projected for 2013, especially for new single-family homes. Neighborhood Services also conducted inspections of all of the mobile home parks in the city. The planning staff is very hard at work on alternative concept maps for our stationary and master plan planning effort. And staff in the planning division has been working closely on some basic concepts and plan ideas for the historic preservation plan. You'll be hearing an update on that at a study session in the second quarter. And as you all know, we hired a new police chief back in January. Nine News provided some publicity of the police department's puffer campaign, and a rather unheralded group in our police department, our Victim Services Unit, assisted 141 victims in the first quarter, a 67% increase from the first quarter last year. They were called out on scene 23 times, which is a 39% increase, and there are currently nine volunteers in the Victim Services Unit. Clearly, with this increase in activity, we are so grateful for the efforts of those volunteers to help provide those critical services. We've traditionally provided a quarterly budget update, a finance update. What we wanted to do is include that quarterly finance update with this overall work plan quarterly update. So this is some very basic summary information. Revenue streams from state and county sources are received about a month after the quarter closes, so are not included in these numbers. Some line items are used more heavily in the first quarter than other quarters, such as membership dues and subscriptions, and will flatten out throughout the rest of the year. And then finally, golf expenditures remain steady throughout the year, while revenue will vary each quarter depending on weather. And we've had a rather odd first quarter in terms of weather. It's been some very nice weather, but some awful weather that's had the golf course closed. The folks up there tell me that the moisture is very much appreciated, but of course, when we get that snow, the golf course is closed, and so we're not generating any revenue. So that's a very quick summary of a great deal of tremendous activity amongst your staff over the first quarter, and happy to answer any questions, and also interested in any feedback you have about the value of seeing the information presented in this fashion. So thank you.
Mr. Mackeldowney.
It may just be me, but this is, I think, the best quarterly update that I've received in my time on council. The combination of documents is excellent, and I think the kickoff comments that you gave in terms of trying to connect all of this back to the city council goals and objectives are areas of focus, it's really helpful. I mean, to be able to take each of those spreadsheets, to be able to look at each of those projects and see how each of those touches on one or multiple areas, where there's cost, where there's not. I mean, again, you're able to look at how staff are aligning against these projects from different perspectives, and it really helps, I think, us get our heads around the activity. The PowerPoint was exceptional because, again, you could move through it in just reviewing those highlights and get a really good sense of what's going on, or if something caught your eye, you were able to drill in and there was additional information there. It was presented in a way that was easy to chunk out, easy to pull it out, and it celebrated the things that needed to be celebrated. So often, we get updates, and it's so bone-dry that it's hard to really discern where there's good news or where there's bad news. And I think this was really helpful for me, and I hope for others, to see, again, it makes it more obvious in certain instances where, again, we need to take hats off to Victim Services or whomever for work well done. So I love the format. I hope to see it continue, and hats off for a lot of activity in the first quarter. This really helps give us a sense of just how much was going on. Folks are busy, but it's good busy for the most part. Thank you.
Mr. Bullock.
I want to echo Mr. Mackeldowney's thoughts because I really enjoyed the way, the format that was presented because it gave us a great snapshot of everything that was happening and the key events in every department. And then if you read further, it even broke it down further. So I really enjoyed that, and it was a really great update for me. So if you want to keep this up, go right ahead because I enjoyed this quite a bit. Thank you.
Mr. Amador.
I'll keep it short, but the presentation, whoever put that together, great job. So make sure that they hear that tomorrow. Thank you.
Mrs. Carson.
I was just going to echo what others have said. When I looked at it Saturday, I had the same impression Mr. Mackeldowney did, is that this is the best one I've ever seen, so thank you for that.
I will have to agree. I think it was very well laid out, and I think that the next three quarters, when it comes to housing market and drawing of new contractors and everything else, is really looking up for us. And the efforts in the Economic Development Department and what we can see for some commercial, retail, that type of opportunities are really starting to be more fluid, and I'm excited about the next three quarters of the year for our residents and the city. So thank you very much. And pass it along to your staffs, please, because I know who does most of the work around here.
Brian.
Well, the nice thing about these summary sheets is all the highlights that you're seeing are provided by the departments. Our terrific folks in communications came up with the format and the template. Because they're kind of, have that outsider's perspective, are good at talking to the department staff and pulling out those things that would be of interest. Sometimes we get so close to the daily operations that it isn't noteworthy to us. So it's just another indication to me as to how valuable our communications division is.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the agenda. We have administrative council business. We need a motion to begin the May 20 meeting at 5:30 PM for an executive session. Mr. Mackeldowney.
I was going to make another motion, but I'm happy to make the motion to start the aforementioned meeting at the time suggested. It was the April which, or I'm sorry, May 20. May 20. So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock?
Second.
We'll motion the second to begin the May 20 meeting at 5:30 for an executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Does council have any administrative council business this evening to talk about? Mr. Mackeldowney.
Thank you. Not sure if anybody's moved down the Chambers Road corridor recently, but if you did within about a week or so, you noticed trash bags all along the side of the road. One of the churches that's been taking shape in the Northern Range for some time has recently rebranded to the landing place. They've actually secured a piece of land in that corridor, and one of their community outreach efforts was to clean up the corridor. And so they reached out to city staff, specifically worked with Dale Wanro, is it Wanro? Am I saying that right? Wanro? Dale Wanro? Who I believe is in our public works department, and helped and received support from staff in the form of vests and guidance, et cetera. But they undertook a cleanup of the Chambers corridor, and it's an effort that they want to continue to do as their contribution to the community. I happen to be participating in a community effort within the Reunion subdivision. Our metro district engaged the citizens to help update some of our landscape. We had some poor decisions made along the way in terms of material choices in our public spaces, and some of the mulch had essentially disappeared, and we, a matter of, I don't know, it was probably somewhere between 70 and 100 people, including kids of all sizes, turned out to remulch a couple of the parks in the community. But long story short, as I'm talking to one of the citizens who I hadn't met before, learned of their effort, and really had a great discussion about how positive his experience was, or their experience was in terms of working with city staff to get this started. And it turned into this brainstorm of, wow, here's a group of folks who saw an opportunity, saw a need, came together, and they've done this, and it's been for our collective benefit. And obviously, we have the Clean Commerce City effort that Neighborhood Services is working to help clean up areas. I wanted to get council's thoughts on the concept of essentially an adopt-a-road, adopt-a-segment effort that could be coupled with our Clean Commerce City effort. I think there are, you know, any number of areas in town, and I think we've had other groups that have done similar things, but it seems like this group in particular had to start from zero. Fortunately, they had a great experience with staff who helped make that happen, but it would be great if we had a more formal opportunity and not only, so that there's essentially a template of how to make that happen, because I think for, whether it's Boy Scouts or whomever that might need a community service project, what's the framework to make that happen? And then for those that do, it would be awesome to be able to recognize them, whether it's a recognition here at a meeting, you know, could we have the guys in the sign shop put a couple of signs up in that corridor that say, this road being maintained by, not unlike the formal adopt-a-highway programs. I think it'd be great to give credit to the folks that are taking the time out of a weekend on a, you know, on a regular basis, effectively, or planning to do so, to help keep our community beautiful. I mean, that's exactly what the quality community for a lifetime, you know, means. I guess it's a great way of embodying that. So I wanted to get council's thoughts on, would you be open to having staff look into what it might take to formalize a program like that? And next, celebrate the folks that did what they just did on the Chambers corridor.
And to expand on that, you know, I've seen the same, I don't know if it's the same group, but I've seen a group around the 104th Avenue and Peoria area doing similar activities, young children, and with, of course, adults helping them, bagging up stuff. And I know we have the QCI. I think it would be a good thing to look at a program and maybe even expanding that to where QCI could offer up some funds for trash bags and help with disposal, so that we can encourage some of these groups without implementing a cost to them by having a way to have waste management handle the trash that they bag so that it's not sitting on the road for a lengthy amount of time, a coordinated effort, and maybe cover the cost of those bags and those type of things, and then maybe on an annual basis or biannually.
Yeah, at some frequency.
At some frequency, ask those organizations that are out there helping to clean up roadways and taking pride in the community to come in and be recognized. So I think it's a great idea.
Cool.
Anyone else?
The idea of waste management's participation is a really cool idea as well. That would be a great way to...
Do you want to vote to give staff direction to start looking at it?
Do we need a...
You don't need that?
Do you want to reform or...
You're good.
I'm seeing general consensus. We'll do some research and bring it back to council.
Thank you. Good idea, Mr. Mackeldowney.
Thank you. And I'll forward, staff, I'll forward the note that I got, the email that I asked for that helped recap some of this, so I wouldn't forget the pertinent details after moving mulch, so thanks.
All right. Mr. Bullock.
Yes, at last Monday's study session, I asked council to consider my request to be a non-voting member on the Stapleton cab, and it was, had to be approved at this meeting. Does anyone here have an objection for me being the member for the Stapleton cab? Do we need a vote, Mr.?
Yeah, I think we should. I think we should. Mr. Mackeldowney.
So moved.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to allow Mr. Bullock to be the member of the cab, a non-voting member at that.
Right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried.
And my second request, when we were on council before, we all got this executive directory. This isn't so much for the council, it's for the wives of council, because in it, it gave all the council members and their wives' names and phone numbers they could reach. When we, we know how to get in touch with everybody, but they don't. They don't know what everybody's name is, and so it helped us. It not only told us the council, it told who was on all the boards and commissions, even our House District seats, Senate seats, and everything, and it was something that we would get every year as an update. Is it possible I could give this to you, Brian, and it's something that we could maybe get back to council, nine copies with all the information? Because it seemed like yesterday, when they were all together, they decided that this is something that the wives need, and I got told, bring it up and make it happen. And so...
If I could get that for me after the meeting, it sounds like a great idea. We'd be happy to update it and get it back out to everyone.
That's all for me.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
Yes, thank you. I had several seniors contact me. Over the weekend, we had pancake breakfast over at the rec center, and usually, you know, in the past, we had barbecular come and sell tickets to us and all that, but they were told at the rec center, I really didn't give me a name, that they were informed that they couldn't contact any of the outer departments or council about upcoming events to notify them and notify us ahead of time. And I kind of found that disturbing. And then when I go on the website to choose activities, I know they said that, like in Reunion of Bell Creek, there's certain activities, a joint effort through the rec center, but when you go on the website, I guess Reunion and Bell Creek are not listed as far as activities that they can participate in. And I'd like to see if we can get an update on the Saddle Crossing. I know that recently they did some work over there. And the horn's still going off at 4:30 in the morning, and we're exactly where we're at with that.
We've jotted all those down. We'll work on getting answers to all those and put those in an upcoming city manager update.
And to the pancake breakfast, you know, if that would have been on my calendar, I would have seen it, and I would have attended. I like to attend that event, and I think it's important to, when those seniors are having that kind of an event, that they are afforded the opportunity and actually encouraged to come here and let us know that they're having an event. And it's the time where we would normally buy tickets and know that it's coming up, and I just didn't have it on my calendar. I didn't realize that Saturday was the pancake breakfast, so I did miss that. I think a few council members did go that knew about it. And, you know, my apologies for missing it to the seniors over at the rec center, but I just didn't, wasn't aware that it was taking place. I happened to go out of town that morning with my son anyway on a hunting trip, but if we could try to make sure that those organizations that are part of this community have, that are afforded and encouraged to come and ask the council for participation and to get that kind of stuff on our calendar is very helpful for me, because my calendar is very extensive, and I want to make sure I set time aside for those things that are most important in our community, and that would be our residents and the events that they partake in.
We can certainly research this particular situation. I'm not sure what seniors may or may not have been told, so certainly take a...
Well, and regardless, I'd like to have those things on our calendar. All right?
Absolutely.
Mr. Mackeldowney.
I just wanted to correct an error in my earlier comments. I credited Dale Wanro as the city staff member. He's not a city staff member. He's actually one of the co-individuals from the community that worked on the street project. Credit goes to Sam Hoover. High marks and kudos to Sam from the community. I wanted to make sure his name was on record. Yes, we know Sam. We love Sam, so apologies for that.
I would like to ask, did the skin patch on the sidewalk where we had the concerned citizen where the daughter was hurt, did that get taken care of?
I don't believe it's been done yet. I think they're working on getting it scheduled so they can provide notice to the homeowner, and it's occurring tomorrow.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Bullock.
Yes, Ms. Ram Cordero sent an email. Did everybody get the email about, please, if you can go to that, email him before 10 o'clock tomorrow. I will be, CML is having their same thing that this is at CML headquarters. I will be, CML is having their same thing that this is at CML headquarters. It's the wrap-up of the legislative session and tell us which all bills passed, which ones didn't, if there's a chance of there's going to be a special session, which right now, it looks very reluctant. He, for one thing, he doesn't want to have a special session, but it doesn't mean that he won't. But if anybody can make that, I think there are five seats and you'll be sitting at Suncor's table.
Perfect. Thank you. I do have one thing I want to bring up to the council. I was invited by Mayor Hancock to attend an economic development trip that's going to be coming up. I think it's important that you all know about it. And I think it's also important that you all know I haven't decided whether it's something I want to participate in or not. I'm, I'm right now working with the staff and trying to weigh the benefits for the city, whether I go or not. And that is, it is a trip, because of the involvement I have with the airport and the relationship that I have with Mayor Hancock, to talk about businesses and, and potential development outside that fence on the airport, to take that trip to Japan to look at their airport in Tokyo. I see some, some good things. I see some, some potential bad, bad things for me to go. And as of right now, it's weighing heavy on me. I know that we will not have a council meeting before I have to make a decision. And so, at this time, I'm not coming to ask for, for the okay from this council to allow me to go. I just want you to be aware that I was invited, and it's weighing heavy on me, and I am trying to make sure that there are, the benefits outweigh the negatives to take that trip for the city. And I'm working with Brian on that now. That would be a four-day trip to Tokyo to see their airport and the development inside and outside of, of the perimeters of that airport. And I guess there's a, a secondary on-the-way-back type of stopover in South Korea to see their airport. But I, first of all, want to thank Mayor Hancock and the city and county of Denver for the invite. But I want to make sure that if I was to take advantage of that invite, that it would have the benefits necessary to consider taking the trip. Is this the time we can make comments on that? Yeah, you can make comments on it. I just wanted to give a heads up to the council so that they're aware of everything that's going on and the fact that, the fact that out of the metro area, I was one of the very few mayors that was invited to participate, says a lot about the regional participation that this council has right now. And the relationships that we have with our, our cities that, that are on our borders. So now's the time, if anybody has anything they want to say about it. Mr. McElhany, your light's on?
Yes. I would say, you know, I won't get into specifics about past discussions about economic development trips. I can say that the trips that we didn't take, some of those we should have taken, I would say, don't let this weigh heavy. As the ambassador of our community, as our mayor, if we have an opportunity to partner with our partner in Denver for the potential benefit of the city, it, it's one of those things that opportunity lost if we don't go, opportunity gains, we can't calculate. This is not one of those things that you can run a simple business case on and say, "I'm going to spend $5,000 on this trip and it's going to get me $2 million in investment." You just don't know. These things don't happen overnight. Economic development is not an instant thing. It's not a, economic development is not like microwave popcorn, right? It just doesn't happen when you pop it in the machine. It takes time. And so, who knows what relationships may form that, you know, maybe it helps us in other ways with Denver, maybe it translates into some development outside the fence. I would say, if, if your gut says it's the right thing to do, it's the right thing to do. Don't overthink it.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes, sir. Last week, I read in the paper a letter that was sent to Denver from Adams County, Commerce City and Aurora about what are the benefits are going to be for us with this, with, with Denver. And right after that letter was sent, Mayor Hancock says, "I want you to go to Japan with me." And it's an economic development trip. I know Evan Dreyer's been over in Japan for the last three weeks doing economic development. And you get a personal invitation from the mayor of Denver to go over on the new 787 Dreamliner on an economic development trip that is probably not going to cost our city one cent. I say you have to go because if you don't go, and don't send another letter saying, "What are you going to do for me?" Because they said, "Here's what I'm doing for you. I'm putting my hand out. Come with me and see what we can do together. And if you don't go, you've missed that opportunity." It's, it's a no-brainer. And it's just like Jason said, don't beat yourself over thinking about it, just start packing.
Mr. Douglas?
Uh, yeah. I understand about the opportunity and the position we're at right now and the talks you've, the city has encountered with the, the county, with Denver, with the other cities in the region. And just keep in mind that there's a lot of unfinished business out there and don't feel pressure to, to side with, with Denver. Keep, keep Commerce City in mind and, and us out front, because we do have unfinished business and we need to think about Commerce City as well as, as Denver, but we need to work together. And it would be a missed opportunity, so there are pros and cons of this, but you have my blessing, so.
I get it. Thank you, Steve. You know, I think it's important to also say that Mayor Hogan has been invited. I don't know if he's accepted as of yet, which, given the issues that we're, we're in the middle of with the consultation committee, the coordinating committee, the IGA, I can tell you first and foremost, my intent is to make sure that Commerce City gets the benefit that it deserves. I think we have to work through the issues. I want to make sure that we get as much, that everything that we deserve and have coming on that eastern border with the airport, including our round ramp and all the other things, those are number one on my list. I think that the relationship that I've built with Mayor Hancock is also very helpful in working through some of those problems. I just, I, I want to make sure it's the right thing. I appreciate what, what council members have said. I do see it being a, a big opportunity. And from, from a regional perspective, to have that, that kind of invite, I think that it's important to note that Denver EDC will be involved, Tom Clark. I think that it could give us a, a good perspective on what a regional Eritropolis scenario looks like, that I could bring back some major information and help this council to understand what we could have or couldn't have depending on how we move forward with the coordinating committee and the consultation committee. So, I think that there are some major gains for this community to have by attending. And my biggest reason for bringing it up is I wanted to publicly thank Mayor Hancock for including us in that type of regional effort. With that said, I think it's also important for me to invite this council Wednesday to the Commerce City Rotary Club. I will be the rotarian of the day. My presentation will be about Eritropolis and airport cities and the IGA. My guest speaker that will be there with me will be Mayor Hancock. And to get the mayor of Denver to come into town to listen to a, a presentation at a Rotary Club, I think is very valuable for our community. I've also invited Mayor Hogan from Aurora, and I also have received responses that two of the commissioners will also be in attendance. So, we're expecting to have a fairly large crowd at the Rotary. Any of the residents that want to attend, it's $15. I, I know they're, they're fairly limited on what they're expecting for food and, and making sure that everything's there for everybody. But I think to get some, some idea of what's happening in the realms of all the airport involvement that I've had, it'd be good for the council to hear that presentation and to be there to support me while we give the, while I give the presentation. So, you're all invited personally by me to attend the Commerce City Rotary Club meeting on Wednesday. The meeting starts at 11:30, includes a lunch and my presentation and, of course, with my guests, several mayors, several commissioners. And I think that that states a lot to where we are with relationships and where we are with trying to move development forward on our borders. So, if you'd like to be there, you're more than welcome. Mr. Benson?
Well, I had a comment about the trip to Japan. You know, whether it costs the city money or whether it's no cost to the city, it's a no-brainer. You need to go as long as you don't get sidetracked over to some useless Chinese visit. We're going to deal with Japan, that's one thing, but China, we wasted about two or three trips going over there for absolutely nothing, probably spent about $20,000 in the process. So I think you need to go, whether the city has to pay for it or not, that's a must.
Let me explain right now where, where the costs are. It's between $5,000 and $7,000, is that correct, Brian?
That's the estimate we have from the city and county of Denver, but with some effort through, I believe, Metro Denver EDC to bring that cost down to the city substantially. So there would be some cost to the city, although I don't know yet at this point how much that-
But there are some offsetting factors that are being looked into, so, so that it wouldn't be 100% on the city's dime. So, I am very much considering it and I'll continue to work with Brian and we'll work through, work through it. I, I do believe there are some major gains for us to have by taking that trip. I, I don't have anything other than going into reports, so if we're through with administrative council business, I'll move on. Steve, did you have something?
Yeah. When you have your presentation on Wednesday, are you, show the map area and-
Yes, what the presentation will be is I'll, I'll start out as all rotarians today do and talk a little bit about my family and where things are at in my life right now. And then, I have Vel Montoya, who's the planning director from the county of Adams, that will give our PowerPoint presentation of all the efforts since the 1988 IGA was adopted for land planning and how those have progressed over the years, planning the area around outside the airport within the Adams County jurisdictions. Then, I will talk a little bit about the IGA, the fact that, you know, dispelling rumors of trying to reopen that IGA, I don't think are, are on the table at all right now. I'll talk about joint efforts to help build regional economic development in and around the airport and no-compete type of opportunities and things to help try to move forward economic development along our tower and Piccadilly corridors in the best fashion possible so that it becomes a win-win scenario for the region. And, and that's what my presentation will be on. I will not be speaking on behalf of the, the Airport Coordinating Committee or Consultation Committee. I will be speaking on my own opinion. And I think it helps if the council's there to, to get to understand where I'm at with it. And there will be a question and answer period after the presentation for the audience to, to ask questions of Mayor Hancock or myself. And, you know, I, I think it'd be very good for, to, to help enlighten anybody that would like to be there. But I think it's, it's mostly important for the council if they'd like to be there.
So the illustration of our, our infrastructure that's going to be on the outside of the airport's going to be shown, correct?
Yep. Yep. We'll, we'll illustrate everything that's happened, from the time the IGA was adopted to where we are now and the direction that we're trying to move forward to encourage development to happen in and around the airport. And so, I don't have a script, I don't have a, a plan, I'm just going to speak from the heart on it. And I think it will be hopefully very helpful to anybody that wants to attend. I'd extend that invitation to, I know Brian's planning on being there and Jim, but Mr. Gaylor, if you'd like to attend, you're more than welcome to, to be there as a guest as well. Brian?
Normally, we would have additional staff attending. Unfortunately, that's the day we're interviewing Public Works Director candidates, so Mr. Hayes won't be able to attend, but I will certainly be there for part of it.
Okay. And Mr. Gaylor, if you want to come, I think it'd probably be interesting-
I'll be there for part of it. I'm also involved with the interview process, but I'll have to, you say it starts at 11:30 and then about 1:30?
Starts at 11:30? Yeah. And it's going to be a little more extended than our average, our average Rotary program, just because of the guests that I have and, and the amount of people, so we can get everybody fed and, and get the presentation going. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Benson, did you have something further? Or is that from before?
That was from my last-
Okay. Mr. Amador?
If I could just ask that staff, send a meeting invite out for that. I'm not sure if that came out or not, and I've declined because of other commitments or I'd like to see that on my radar. Please.
Okay. Now we'll move into reports. I want to start out with, I attended Airport Coordinating Committee, Rotary, had a meeting with Dave Hammer. Several of us attended memorial services for Paul Ryan. Paul Ryan was a colleague and a close friend, was one of the chief of staffs for the city of Denver, unexpectedly died from a burst appendix at the age of 49 years old. So, he was working very closely with the team that is working on the Airport Coordinating Committee and, and all the efforts that are going on in and around the airport. So, he will be missed. I've had meetings with Chad Tedesco. Several of us attended the AdCog Dinner at Adams County. I've been attending the NADA meetings. Also, myself and Mr. Benson attended the ICSC prep meeting, the first one, and we have another one coming up. I had a, a meeting with Mayor Hancock, and I think it's important to say that over the years that I've been involved with the city, there's not a lot of times that the mayor of Denver comes down and has meetings here at Commerce City City Hall. And it's nice to have the relationship that we have to try to, try to work through not only airport issues, but we have a lot of, a lot of development going on along our borders. And we have that ramp that we need to get in place on Pennion Tower. And we are working very close with Denver to try to get that ramp in place. And I think it's also very important to say that the airport issues are not tied to the ramp issues or the other development issues that we have relationship with Denver on. Several of us also attended the Commerce City 27J Brighton Joint Dinner. Commerce City hosted that. I want to thank all of our staff that helped put that together and the folks at Buffalo Run for providing the meal. Also, there were, there were a few of us that attended Law Day. It was really well-attended this year and very early in the morning, but it's, it's definitely a good event to participate in. I know Steve was there and myself, and I know Mr. Teeter and Renee was there. Mr. Teeter intended to go there but had something come up and was unable to attend. But he asked me how it went and I know he had an interest to be there, and otherwise, he would have been there. Several of, several of us and our wives attended the Commerce City Historical Society Lunch from time to time yesterday, which was a great event. And also, I want to make note that the next regular council meeting, I will be out of town, myself and Mr. Benson. Mayor Pro Tim Bullock will be presiding over the meeting that evening, so don't be too rough on him, but be rough enough. I've got to stress that, be rough enough. So, with that said, is there anybody who would like to expand on the reports? Ms. Carson?
I was just going to add that Mr. Bullock and myself and some members of Adams 14 School Board will be reading, if I could be a mayor, essays. We had over 200 applicants, of students putting these in, and Youth Commission went through them and took them down to the top 50. Mr. Bullock, myself and some board members from Adams 14 will get it down to five. And then, I think those five are coming to council, is that correct? So, that, that was all I wanted to say. And then I wanted to tell, Happy Mother's Day to all of our staff and all the mothers out there in the city. It is, it's a proud day, isn't it? So-
Happy Mother's Day to all those mothers. I agree. I agree. They're one of the most important things we have in our life. Good call, Ms. Carson. Anybody else have anything to add to the reports? Yeah. I was going to skip them tonight, Rick. Mr. Attorney, you have a report this evening?
Two items. You have the- You have, the council's been getting a quarterly report from my office, city attorney's office. And I'm one month off from the staff's report. So this next, this, this report will be for the months of February, March and April. So you'll be getting one here shortly. But then the next one will just be for two months so that I'll get aligned with staff's report to the council on staff's activities. And so, the city attorney's report will be coming at the same time as the staff report. So, but that'll happen after this report that you'll get probably in the next week or so. So it'll be two months then for the period following. The other thing I wanted to add, as you know, or most of you know, I've also been attending those coordinating committees and been actively involved with the airport issues. And I certainly join with what has been said tonight about the mayor attending this trip with Mayor Hancock, because I think it would be a real negative effect if he were to turn down that invitation. Because there's certainly a need to have some real dialogue going with Denver because there have been indications that we're this close to litigation and Commerce City has been influential in trying to avoid that, that result. And attending with Mayor Hancock, I think, would be a real plus for Commerce City to keep things moving in a positive direction in this whole area. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to highlight two items in this week's city manager's report, the entire report was sent to you prior to tonight's meeting, so please take a look and contact us with any questions. Two items of note, there's some information in the report about our new Small Business Development Center. We've got an event planned to properly open that facility. Great work by our Economic Development Division to help bring additional services to the business community in hopes of growing business here locally. And then, most importantly, I'll be out of town the end of this week and next week. So Mr. Hayes will be acting city manager, wad them out.
And on that note, happy anniversary to you and your wife.
Thank you very much.
Twenty-five years.
My actual anniversary is in June, but unfortunately, we, it was too complicated to take a trip then. But in June, we will have been married 25 years.
That's great.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. With that said, if there's nothing further to come before this council of Commerce City, Colorado, we are adjourned.
We have a GID meeting.
Now we're going to have a GID meeting.
You should have told them, don't you?
Don't leave, Steve. We got a GID meeting.
No, we don't. I was just joking.
No, you weren't.
Yes, I was.
Were you?
Yeah.
Why'd you do that to me?
Okay, I was going to tell you.
Never mind, we don't have a GID. These kids are out here going, what? I'm going, what? Oh, yeah. Done.
Sean, you sure have me scrambled.